Okay, we're gonna call it a order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and every justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna start with public comment. I do want to mention, the meeting is being recorded, so if you make a comment, it's gonna be on tape and you comply consent by continuing. I did want to say, we're gonna try to keep to our time limits tonight. Please address the chair when you're speaking and please wait to be recognized to speak. And please no side discussions while we're, so we can all hear everything that needs to be said. That being said, Diana?
Diana, uh-huh. Who am I to be addressing? You have. I'm gonna read this, 'cause I'm gonna put this into the hard minutes.
Okay.
My name is Diana Wenslow and I am here tonight representing the HOA at the Summit of New Freedom. I am here to formally put on record that the new Penn Waste contract for the New Freedom Borough does not work well in our community. Here are a few examples why. We are a townhouse community with over half of the homes not having driveways or garages. For pickup day, the only solution is to drag the totes to the back of our homes and back out again each week. At my house, for example, the distance from myself to drag these around, since I am in a middle unit, is 190 feet on one side and 282 on the other side. The shortest route of 190 feet is up a steep hill. These totes are heavy and unruly on grass and hills. There are many residents over the age of 60. Many have medical conditions or disabilities that will make this weekly moving and removing the totes impossible. If you add bad weather conditions and the fact that we have no place to actually put these for pickup, according to the regulations sent to residents by Penn Waste, this contract does not work in our community. I was told by a Penn Waste representative to put the tote behind my car in the street. So residents without a driveway have to put these in the street, which is hazardous and which means residents have to put it out the night before behind their vehicle and move it in order to leave for the day. I was told that if a tote becomes damaged, Penn Waste will replace it at no charge, but your contract says that the resident is required to pay for a new tote. I have read the RFP for the new trash contract and saw that there is no provision as to how the trash is to be collected, and I confirmed that with the Southern Regional Department for Waste Management. This tote method may work for the majority of New Freedom, but no forethought or consideration was taken regarding the actual logistics of how these totes would affect some communities. Our communities would like to return to the old way of pickup that includes the option of no totes. Therefore, I turn to the borough to make reasonable accommodations for my community and others where their pickup system, as it stands now, does not work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Couple comments. I think they've offered three possible solutions, the smaller totes, putting a corral up where the totes would be in the corral.
At the HOA's expense, unless you, and there's no, I don't know if you're familiar with my community, but it is very tight. There's not a lot, there's no open space or on a cliff that faces Constitution, I believe, the back of the houses.
There is one dumpster though, right?
We have no dumpster.
Not now, but it has to be at one spot. I think it would be difficult for the entire community if there were no place throughout between, I don't think that's the best option. But that's an option.
And it also runs into the issue of, like I said, I'm 63. I've got, my neighbors are 65, 64, and we're single women in this, in this community. Those heavy totes are practically impossible. I had to pull mine out from behind my house, put it in front of my house, and take my trash and put it in it, 'cause I can't move it.
They have a smaller tote though.
We saw that, we saw that. And I'm, you know, if they can, if the entire community or whoever wants it can be exchanged, you know, it still doesn't, it still doesn't solve the issue of where we're supposed to put it. Our HOA has laws, bylaws, that say you're not supposed to put it, you're not supposed to store a trash can or any kind of debris in front of your house. So in order for me to enforce this, I don't think, I don't know if I can. I drove through the neighborhood over the weekend and a lot of people have them in the front of their houses, and it makes it not look pretty. So I just, I wanna, I wanna retain the beauty of the community. We do not have a place to put corrals, and that doesn't end the, and the reason, the thought behind people still have to drag it to that corral for it in order for it to be picked up.
The totes would stay in the corral.
Right, but we have to, we have to still take our trash to it. And again, that just comes with the same issue. And people can't store them on their decks if they don't have steps, or if they do. I have steps, but there's no way I can schlep that thing down two flights of steps. So all I'm asking for is some consideration for our community. We have, I have no place to put these. According to the regulations, three feet apart, next, nothing, next to nothing permanent. There's, we, someone in the community calculated, we need 864 feet to do it the way Penn Waste wants it to do it. And that's just, that's just impossible.
How many individuals are we talking about? Do you know, in your HOA, how many?
We have fif, I think it's 54 to 55 units. And over, I think, 29 of those are without garages and driveways. So those people are going to be putting them in the street. They have no reflective tape on them and, you know, don't even, and with rain and snow, people are going to damage them. They're gonna hit them. They're gonna cause damage to their cars. And honestly, my biggest fear is, is an older person trying to drag these around to their, in front of their house in bad weather, and they fall and they break something. All right?
I hear your concern. Before this change, how did you handle your trash pickups?
We had, we, I live in one of the units that has the little island that sticks out where the cluster box is for the mail. Everyone on my, in my little section would bring their trash there the night before in, in just individual bags. So if they have two or three bags, they just could bring them out one at a time if they're a contractor bag. And, you know, it hasn't caused any real issues.
How many bags would you say on an average trash pickup would be in that location prior to January?
Between, without recycling, just straight trash?
Straight trash, we'll start there.
I usually put two to three contractor bags out a week. A couple ladies down put two or three. They have children. And my neighbor probably only puts out one white bag, and then the neighbor next to me puts two or three contractor bags.
And it's mainly these 29 units that is the real problem at all?
Not necessarily. Someone's here also that has a garage unit and he cannot fit his car and these totes inside his garage.
So did everybody in this community put their trash by these little areas where mailboxes, that's, that's where it was?
That's the way it was, yes.
So say you had 15 bags of trash at yours, how many other locations in your community would be like that on a pickup day?
On the next island down, and then across the street are the garaged houses. So they just put them out at the end of their street. They put their trash out. And as you go around, if, some people were able to put them out, if they have garages, they can put them out at the end of the street. The other people, I've never really gone down to Sherwin very often, but they probably have the same modality of doing it as I do, where we put them in the islands.
We're not really gonna solve this right this second, but we are gonna work on it this month with Borough Office. One thing I would like to say though, this is, this is the future. I mean, this is how, you can't bid, they won't bid a contract anymore unless you use toters or some way to, you know. So we need to find a way to make it as easy on you people as possible, but still meet some semblance of the contracts.
Well, that, see, and that, in that, in that regard, sir, I question that, because when I called Southern Regional Waste Management, I said, "Do you have a particular way the trash needs to be picked up?" And they said, "No." So that means your vendors, your contractors are telling you how they're gonna do it, not.
Who is Southern Regional?
It's, it's on the Department of Environmental Protection that you had in your RFP. I called them and they said, "Oh, you need to talk to Waste Management, the people who handle the trash that goes into the York Refuge Center."
York County Solid Waste Department.
Yes, that's who I spoke with, yes. They called it Waste Management, but yes.
So when we were brought this contract in October, and we were told that we had to decide at that meeting, there was no time left. It was said with a representative from Penn Waste that was here, that that representative, Andrew, would get together and figure out the situations for communities like this and narrow streets. But now it's January, this is back in October, which should've, I would assume, when negotiations for this happened prior to October, what has been done to alleviate the situation since October?
We met on site on Friday with representatives. We met with Penn Waste and Diana, as well a couple other residents, and they provided a, pretty much an array of solutions for everything from staying with the larger carts to going with the smaller carts, to possibly looking at dumpster service, as well as making a corral for all the other toters. So we knew that there were going to be issues and we have to address them as they come up, but this is the way that the three approved haulers in York County, which are Penn Waste for Public Services and Waste Management, are negotiating their contracts. We're basically insisting that the municipalities go this direction. So there's not an option. It would've been bid either way with the three of those haulers.
And they're the only three people that bid?
Oh, they're the only permitted haulers.
Probably permitted haulers.
This was the only one. But it was said in that October meeting that for the narrow streets, there would be a different truck that would come around to pick up those that wouldn't have the arm. How come these people can't put their trash out like they did before? Because you're gonna have that one different truck that isn't going to pick it up with a machine. How come they can't go back to that?
Well, I, go ahead.
Well, first of all, Penn Waste informed us that they can't even purchase that type of truck anymore. So every truck that they purchase now is an automated truck.
When they came this past Friday, I saw them for the first time, and there was a man on the back of the truck.
That's correct, because they're still cleaning up everything from the borough. During this transition phase, they can't run full automation.
But he had, there was a thing that picked up, he took the can there, but then the machine picked it up.
Right, and that's temporary. That, if we were informed, that's gonna be for the next couple months until they can fully transition everything to automation.
So in a few months, there's gonna be nobody getting out of that trash truck or standing on the back of that truck. Nobody.
There will be one driver and he will operate.
I, I have a corner house.
I just had a question.
And.
I just had a question.
First of all, it's ugly. And it did take me for a ride. My house shoes went flying. So, you know, I understand what the, you know, what the problem is. If you get smaller cans, I was going to hire someone to have an enclosure when I leave by my back door so I can hide these things, 'cause I think they're so ugly. But, you know, if, perhaps if you get smaller ones, it is a future and we have to move along with the future. But I know exactly what you're saying. I had some bags in there and it, my driver just has a little bit of it and a pretty bad fall. I wouldn't have a so high me for it. But, I mean, if we can, you know, get smaller cans or maybe even get two, or get some kind of enclosure.
Well, that's, that's the thing that's.
You know, that's what we need to work on.
The problem that we've got is that at some point, there will just be a driver. When they get to, for instance, South Front Street and there are cars blocking, the driver will have to get out and put it on the arm to take it up.
To take it.
But there will still be toters. They're not going to get out and throw 15 bags of trash. It's still gonna be automated, and that's for a number of reasons. The workers, workmen's comp, people throwing out shoulders, you know, even, even just trying to get stabbed at.
I know, it's the future, but if you see, you know, my house, it is, it's a corner. And it's just ugly, you know. I don't know how we can enclose it to make it look better. I drove all around and I saw.
Well, there are, there are enclosures.
There has to be, there have to be some kind of enclosures. I went to Home Depot to check it out, what I could do to make it, because I was shocked when I saw all the cans and, and it gave, it gave an ugly look to the neighborhood.
And they do pop. They're bright blue. And so that's, that's the first thing I did.
We need to work on it, and I'm sure we're gonna work on and find a solution.
But to answer your question, that's, they are going with less and less people on the truck. There's only gonna be a driver.
Yeah.
They're gonna have to pull it out, put it on the arm and dump it. And that's how it's, it's gonna be done. So.
What do you mean, the driver's gonna have to get out?
If there, if a car is blocked in, has blocked trash in, let's say I put my trash out, someone comes along and parks. This is gonna happen all the time on Fridays and if it gets pushed into Saturday, 'cause when the train comes on South Front Street, everybody parks there. So the trash people, the driver will get out, pull the can out, put it on the arm, and have it dumped that way. But there's only gonna be one person on the truck.
That's gonna get old real fast.
It is.
One is going to be the, you know it's coming, so what is the resolution now for that?
Just told you.
Yeah. That was the answer to the question.
That's, yeah.
They're gonna have to pull the cans out.
But that's, no, that's gonna get old. That's, I don't see that having any longevity of a driver having to get out.
That's what they've said they're going to do right now. If they come back and they say, "We can't do that anymore," I guess we'll have to address that when it happens. But that's currently the point.
They have, they have responsibility to provide that service. They need to figure out how they're going to provide that service. This is what they're telling us they're going to do. If we have issues, we'll address it down the road.
So you're saying smaller totes, put cans in a corral or a dumpster for these people? Those, that's the only options?
Correct.
Well, how do you feel about these options?
It's not acceptable. I mean, the smaller totes may be the way to go, but that doesn't, that doesn't solve the fact of, of having to move them back and forth. And maybe people haven't driven through the summit. Some of the places are fine, but there's a group of townhouses that I'm sure all of you've passed on Constitution that has a cliff in the back of them. And we do have, you know, a provision where you can go through someone's yard to take the trash, you know, take your totes out. But what, what my concern is, is I don't believe personally that Penn Waste is not gonna have regular dump trucks anymore. The regular ones that they are, I mean, trash trucks. The ones they have now, they're just not, I said, I asked the guys, I said, "Are you gonna just destroy all the ones you have?" "Oh, no, but they're getting old."
They're gonna be phased out.
But Maryland is, it's not phased out. I work in Maryland, and it's not phased out. And.
You can't take our trash to Maryland.
I know, I know.
And they'll sell those trucks to somebody in Maryland that uses them, because come soon, that's all about.
And I know for a fact that many, many townhomes in Maryland have exactly what we're talking about. They have a dumpster centrally located, and the people take one or two bags out and they throw them in the dumpster.
And that may be the fact that that was probably started at the beginning of the community. This community's been around for 25 years and people are not used to this. And again, we have, I don't even know how much public land. We have very little public land. Or I'm gonna be impeding or trying to take someone's property to put these corrals?
Aren't you a condominium?
We are condominium HOA.
Right, so you have some common area within the, within the common unit.
Behind each, behind each unit facing each other. So if they want.
You can change your condominium documents as well to address that.
I have, I have spoken with my management company, and we're, I don't think there's anyone in the community who would wanna change the HOA docs to say, "Leave your trash cans out front." Because only.
And that's fine.
The common areas are, are behind both units. So I got a unit on Sherwin and units on Reese, and the common area in between is all, is all for the kids, where the kids play.
But aren't you using common area now to put your trash out?
No.
On the islands?
That island is, I own that island. So I just think that, I mean, this is the way it's gotta be. I just had to come here and, and put it in writing that I don't agree, and I think this was, this should not have, this should have been vetted, I think, a lot more. I think someone from here in Penn Waste should've driven through every single community and said, "It's not gonna work here. It's not gonna work here." Because I just don't, I don't like the idea that we just put a, a broad brush on this trash instead of coming up with separate solutions to make the community and the constituents feel good about their community, 'cause people are already upset that they can't lift them, that they look horrible. And, you know, this is out of my hands, but I'm just coming to you for a solution. And I will go to the, and I will go on the Facebook page for the HOA and I will tell them, you know, once you guys can, you know, vet it out, what we're gonna do. I guess the only solution right now is obviously, I wanted to go back to the old way with the trucks. The smaller totes, that I was, I think I was made aware that we did not know that there was a chance to get the smaller totes. So that means the borough paid for 96 sized totes that were probably more expensive than the 30, than these other, these smaller totes.
The borough doesn't pay for any of this. It's all in the mid-price. And the reason why we don't have separate issue or separate resolutions for every community is your price would've gone up. So you try to get a standardized process for the entire contract to get the best price for the entire community, not just yours. And that's part of the issue with this. I represent a number of municipalities, and we've tried to say in some of those communities, "We're not gonna bid toters. We don't want toters." You know what? We got one bidder and the price went up. So we, the truth is, is that is the circumstance that we're facing in York County. We have exactly, usually two bidders, if we get them, and they do, can tell us what the terms are.
They can tell us what the terms are.
Well, what they'll bid to, if we don't get a bidder, we don't have anyone to pick up your trash.
So they're basically telling you what to put out to bid?
That, they work with us to tell us what they're going to do and what, how to get the best price for the municipality.
Okay, all right. Just one last comment or thought that maybe we can look into. I don't know, it's not, this is your game, but there are, there are tons of, of trash companies in the upper part of Maryland who would, if you put the agreement out properly, yes, the RFP out properly, and tell them that they need to go to the York Recycling or the York Trash Plant, maybe there's a possibility to get some more competition, because.
This is publicly advertised, and if they had the license and the ability to collect trash in New Freedom, they could have bid it.
They need to be approved by York County Solid Waste Department.
I had asked that question and I was told, "No."
Well, because of the time.
I think probably at this point, the best thing to do is to ask your people if any of these are, is something they can live with. Either the smaller toters or, I'm sorry, go ahead, go.
Hi, my name's Robert Pringle, and I appreciate you all letting us come. I'm gonna echo Diana, and I'm really happy that she's here representing our community. I've been there the whole 25 years. When I moved into my home, my daughter was a year old, and there was only six, when you turned in Sherwin Court, there were six units on one side, six on the other, before all the 54 were built. We've never had a problem with trash. The only, the only problem we've had with trash is crows. That's it. You grew up. But we take great pride in our property. My wife and I could've easily bought another home, a single home where maybe many of you enjoy that with a driveway, with a deck, with a big, plenty of area. But we take pride in our area. I like Diana live in a middle unit or a second unit. And it was, for me, 57 years old, I liked to carry that tote. Here's my question. How did we go from two pickups a week to one, then we have to schedule bulk pickup, and that's gonna, excuse me, I'm a little upset because I can feel what Diana's saying. How, how did it go to that? Then you're telling us we have to use these totes. Then our bill went up. How'd that happen? You say smaller totes. Two good trash bags fill that big tote up. So we're gonna have more trash. It's gonna look horrible. Everybody with their big beautiful houses like upwind Constitution and Campbell will have a beautiful community, and ours is gonna look like Section 8. It's unacceptable, and I think we need that consideration.
I have a question. What percentage of people use trash cans prior? It sounds like a lot of people use bags. Did anybody use trash cans?
Maybe one or two.
I'll, I'll answer, I'll answer the question. We have, we have pictures and they're.
But I think, I think the consideration needs to be given to us. And it should've been given to us before a contract was made. I, I spoke to the manager by email and I told him, "It was very unfair for us to get a letter that said this was being changed." But we pay the borough taxes. We pay the, the trash bills that are going up and up and up and up. And here, you can't tell me, like Diana said, that you can't have a truck to come around and pick up our trash from that little development, the way it's been picked up, and then Penn Waste can accommodate us. Yes, things are moving to the future, but we don't have big beautiful homes with yards and back decks and all that kinda stuff. I don't have a garage. The people across from me have garages. They can't even fit their car in because of these great big totes. That's what I'm saying, and I agree with Diana and I agree with the young lady at the end, that it's, it's really not fair to us to have to come and argue something when we faithfully, in 25 years, my wife and I have never missed a borough bill. We've never missed a tax bill. We've never missed a HOA payment. But every single time we turn around, a decision's being made for us and we're not getting the appropriate response or consideration that we deserve. That's why I'm here. I respect all of you. I respect the offices that you hold, but guess what? We pay you to do it. If you're volunteers, wonderful, but this building belongs to us.
I agree.
So we should be able to say that it doesn't work in our community. And it does look horrible. I take pride in my home. I don't want people to come visit my home and the first thing they see is trash cans. I don't want my neighbors living with trash cans inside their house, because then the next thing you know, we're gonna see rodents, we're gonna see all kinds of things going on, and when people are dragging the trash cans out, trash is gonna be all over the place. I know what I'm talking about because I've seen it in other, in other areas in this township. It needs to be taken seriously, and I for one would have loved for somebody to come knock on my door and say, "Hey, Mr. Pringle, what do you think about this?" Our HOA sadly is, their hands are tied because they all, they're trying to deal with angry homeowners, and they're trying to deal with companies that are trying to make money. So that's what I'm just asking you to please, as our borough, as our representatives, say to Penn Waste, "It does not work in this community. We have to find out something." A crowd would be fine, but we might have 55 units, but maybe five out of the 55 might be slobs. So they're gonna throw their stuff all in there and they're not gonna take care of it, and we're gonna be responsible for cleaning up behind them? That's not what a community's supposed to look like, let alone in a community that's selling townhouses for over a quarter million dollars. These aren't cheap townhouses, and this isn't a slum. This is a nice, beautiful community, and it has been for 25 years. So I'm begging you, begging you. And you can take a personal statement. I'll sit in front of the camera or whatever. I will tell you, I'm begging you to help it to remain a place that we can be proud of, something, something that we can invite our friends and our families and people be proud to live in their townhouse and we take care of it. I'm just asking.
I thank you, and I, I hear you. And this was brought to us in October, and that's one of the things that I did ask for a survey to be sent out. We had two poor choices in front of us.
And they hear anything.
I know, because I was told that we had to make the decision that night. And I think that this is something that we need to take in account going forward with everything when there are contracts and decisions that need to be made, that it isn't brought to us here at this council on the month it has to be made.
And Mr. Andrew told me that my feelings were gonna be taken into consideration. So I expect all of you to take our feelings very seriously and understand that we're not cheapskates. We're paying our bills and we're working hard. My wife and I work very hard to keep our property looking nice. And Diana can tell you, we fight when it comes to our community looking nice.
I appreciate that.
When I asked about how many people use trash cans, you had raised your hand, ma'am.
Yes. I can tell you just from where we are on the, the corner of the second house end coming off of George Street onto Sherwin, there are no trash cans other than, I'd say the fourth house end that just moved in this, I guess, middle. the fourth house end that just moved in this, I guess, middle to end of the last year. They have one trash can they use. Everybody else uses trash can, trash bags.
What do you do with the trash bags between pickups?
What do we do with them?
We don't sit them in front of our house.
Well, we had two days a week then, they only have one. So two days a week, we can put them out Monday night, you know, we'd have a bag or two.
But you still have three or four days.
And then, yeah, but I mean, we're not, we're not hoarders that we're gonna have, you know, bags sitting in our house constantly waiting for trash day. We might have one that we either have to sit in the back of our house or our basement or storage room or something like that, but...
Who wants trash in their house?
But we want trash in our house, yeah. And we said, if we have a lot, say there's a holiday where we have a big event, something like that, and we have more trash than we normally do, we sit it in the back of our house, not the trash can, but it sits on the ground until the next trash time that we can put it out. But nobody uses trash cans. They're always bags. Other than the fourth house down, they have a trash can that sits right where the mailboxes are. And that's another issue. We're told we're not supposed to put, Penn Waste told us on that newsletter that we're not to put, supposed to put the cans in front of the mailboxes. Well, when you have this many people in a community, how are you gonna keep from putting them in front of the mailboxes three feet apart? You got a trash can and a recycling. So if you count the houses and everything is three feet apart, you're blocking cars in, you're not just gonna have them close to the mailboxes, you're blocking cars in that have to, people have to get out to go to work. You're blocking close to fire hydrants where we're not supposed to put them near the fire hydrants. So that's three feet apart. So we're getting to where we're almost out to the stop sign, we're lining, lining trash cans up, lining them all up to be picked up. It makes sense.
Andrew, to go back to Penn Waste, you can hear the, the feeling here of the people to negotiate something that without a trash can.
What's in violation of the ordinance if there's no trash?
Yeah.
That's actually, that's why I asked what they did.
You have to have a receptacle, you cannot have a trash bag out for trash collection.
Well, somebody's...
It's been like, it's been like that for 25 years because I just amended the ordinance. And that's not, we didn't enforce it, but that's what the ordinance said, is what I'm telling you.
Are you gonna enforce it now?
I don't know. That's up to you guys. According to you, we would.
Well, doesn't mean it's gonna be done anyway.
Hi, thank you Chair and thank you members. I think to better help understand the situation, the, the issue with the trash bags was I think they would store the trash on their deck or where they could, but it was having the availability to then take that trash from your deck in a bag right through your house and put it out in front, not having to store it on a deck, then take that down steps and around a four, five unit area and then figure out, hey, now instead of being able to just sit it in a, a easy area that doesn't encumber the mailboxes now, it seems like the proposal is that they're gonna have to put it basically behind or in front of their parking spots. So I think that's what they're saying is they had the ease of accessibility to take these two or three bags because they had two collection days a week. I'm in a garage unit, so I use a can, I'm very, but that's because I was able to prior to these. But in seeing what they did, for someone who's of elderly age, it's very easy to take a bag or two or three, walk through your house and set right out versus having to store it and then take the bulk of it in a can because that's what, what's required for it to be collected. Before easy bags, now it's gotta be in a bigger can. I hope that sums it up some. Thank you for your time.
When you met at Summit, did, um, did you find an area that would be suitable for a corral?
There was an area suggested. We're waiting on some additional pictures from Penn Waste to show other townhome communities and how they do it that way. There was also a discussion in Herb Block about putting it across the street in one central location. Penn Waste also informed us that they could collect in that development first every week so that they would go in there first, collect everything that would eliminate any issue conflicting with mailboxes or people getting in and out in the morning. So again, they're trying to be accommodating to make concessions.
But people that are working won't be there to take...
I think, I think what we have to do, I think what we have to do at this point is let, you know, let the Borough Office work on it with Penn Waste and come back to you with, with possibilities. The corral is probably gonna be, I think, the best, the best of both worlds. I mean, you'll have the totes, but they won't be in front of your house, they'll be blocked so there won't be any visual sight of the trash cans.
I don't believe there's any place to, we have to have, we'd have to probably have three, if not four. And being in a townhouse, you know, you only have, you're 20 feet and you're, and whatever, 30 feet behind you, we have very little public space and those poor people on the end units are gonna be the people who are gonna take the Eastman away and put a corral in front of their house and it, and it's gonna be at the HOA's expense. You guys aren't gonna pay for it. So we're already, you know, we are a townhouse and we have, I just can't expect the people to pay for something that's still going to further inconvenience them and maybe not look nice. So all I'm asking is just give it some consideration and also, back to the Maryland people, maybe if you put something out to tell them that they can bid because you...
The problem is that they're not licensed.
But let they, how do they get licensed?
They have to, they have to do that between their business and York County Solid Waste Authority and I can guarantee if they wanted to do business and it was profitable for them, they would have already done that.
We've been putting this out for public bid for the last 20 years.
But where do you put it? Is it, is it in like a general thing or does it only go to York County?
No, it's, it's in the newspaper and it also gets picked up by municipal, municipal publications in the entire country because we get calls about it. So you can, anyone could come and bid on that if they meet the requirements. We don't hide this. I mean, you make it sound like we're only sending it to certain people. This is publicly advertised every five years.
But the way that, that solicitation was written, it was written, in my opinion, Penn Waste told you what to say. You didn't ask for what you really possibly wanted. You asked, this is all we have. That's the way, that's the way I'm seeing this.
We, we only have three possible bidders, okay? Current. And that's all across your county. And they came to us and both the bidders that bid on our contract said, if you don't have totes because we're going automated trucks, you will not get a bid from us. So that means we would have no one to pick up your trash. That, that's literally what happened. And, and I've had other communities that said, yeah, we're not gonna change it, we only gotten one bidder or we've gotten zero bidders and had to change the requirement. It is the market driving the requirements. I, I understand your frustration, but it's, it's what's going on in the United States right now about how the market is driving a lot of services. That's what's happening.
I mean, to, to answer your question about why did the price go up so much? We had eight, eight, if, I don't know if anyone else is on social security, but we had an 8.7% cost of living increase in our social security because that's what inflation was last year. We've got a terrible staffing shortage that, you know, you can turn on Fox, MSNBC, whoever you want to listen to and everybody has a staffing shortage. The tipping fees went up, we almost didn't have tipping places to, you know, even a place to go to because people don't want landfills in their community. So people are balking at expanding landfills. So all those things factored into this and we tried to keep the price as low as we could and the options were limited.
Um, I'm sorry.
Just a quick question. As a resident, now I'm understanding that there's a, an option for two different sizes of containers. Why were the residents not asked what size container they wanted? I have an 84-year-old mother, do you think she can move her trash can? Nope. Can't even get it out of the garage.
Yeah.
I, I have to do that every week. So if there was an option for a smaller receptacle, why weren't we given that?
I don't think we knew there was an option at the time. This came up at whenever we started running into people like your mom and people trying to get the totes out. I think they came back and said, we could go with a smaller tote.
So how are we able about getting those? Is that an option?
Call the Borough Office.
The other concept was is if you get rid of twice a week collection, you can store it all in one tote. So instead of keeping it in your house, I've, I've had a 96-gallon toter for the last 10 years.
You're 94 and a little old lady.
You're right, I'm not. But the point is, is I don't have to keep it on my back deck, I don't have to keep bags on my back deck or because I don't have two collections. A lot of communities have gone from two collection to one to help save money. The idea was if you have a bigger toter outside that the contractor's providing, you can store your garbage in there. So there, it wasn't just, we wanted to give different options and the more options you give, the more it costs. So you, you either have to give on cost or you have to give on services. So when you try to get the lowest cost across the borough, you try to, to kind of find that balance. Of course, it doesn't sound like it's working in your, in your community and I understand that. It doesn't work for everybody. I've had this conversation in a dozen communities in the last five years and that's what happens. And we try to find the sweet spot and that's what we're working through right now.
And like, like I said, let the Borough Office go back to Penn Waste and see what we can come up with.
All right. Just two more comments then. First of all, thanks everyone for listening to me and, and Ron and Jake. To me, if, and I know that this is not my place, but competition in contracting makes prices go down. And when you've got only two people bidding, they know, they can charge you anything they want, plus the fact they did not tell you you had an option for 96. So they put in their bid price, 1,951 96 size containers and didn't put an alternate in or an option for a smaller container. So they just got you for whatever the price difference is from 96, 1,951 96 totes to these smaller ones and they got it. So I'm just saying, competition is healthy.
What would you have us do to increase competition? In, in York County, Pennsylvania, under the current rules and laws of Pennsylvania, what would you have us do differently?
I think they need to be realistic and see that the prices are continuing to go up because you've only got Mr. A and B, you need, you need healthy competition.
But then you need to go to Harrisburg and explain to them that they need to change the rules of bidding for burrows so that we can do that. We can't do that. We're stuck with the Pennsylvania borough code and it says thou shall do it this way and that's what we did.
We can't go to Maryland and ask people...
We can't go to Maryland.
But can you represent us? Can you represent us to the point of we, when I leave, my wife and I leave and my neighbors leave, that we're gonna know that this is gonna be on the top of your, um...
The borough, the manager said...
And I will be checking in weekly to see if this is gonna be taken care of. If there's a corral and it's gonna be built and it's gonna be neat, that's something that, that's an option. I mean, even some of my neighbors, if you want me to come down and help you take your, that's the kind of things that neighborhoods do, but I guarantee you, most of you don't have to live through what we're living through. Most of you don't have to drive up in front of your house that you work every day to pay for and see trash cans. You don't have to see that. You don't, and, and some of you, I see some of the looks on your faces, I can tell, it really isn't a big concern to you, but it's a big concern to us. Ever since we got that letter saying that these trash cans were gonna be delivered, we were on it. Diana will tell you, that community was on it, we were complaining and two months later, when we hadn't heard anything, I told my wife, well, maybe they're considering us. Nope. Holiday weekend, come home after going with family, come home and they're sitting all in front of our houses. 12 o'clock at night, neighbors clinging, I'm trying to get them into their houses. Some of our neighbors haven't even moved, they're still sitting in front of the houses. So I'm asking each one of you, when you lay down tonight, think about your neighbors who pay just as much tax as you do. Think about your neighbors and where they have to store their trash cans, how our neighborhood looks when you drive around, how our neighborhood looks. Some of you may have nice, big, beautiful houses with yards. We have little, beautiful homes that we want to keep our homes looking nice. So it's not about your contract. I work for Baltimore County Recreation and Parks and guess what? I'm in grants and contracts. These contracts shouldn't even have been approved by anybody until the residents had a say in what was going on because our money is the what's paying for the contract. So we should have at least known, there should have been some kind of a meeting, you should have said, um, neighbors, come out because we have to talk about this before a decision's made.
Your taxes do not pay your trash bill.
Well, some's paying the trash bill, sir. And guess what? It went up 10 bucks. And one, and one doggone pickup a week. And I'm, I'm sorry if I say I'm passionate, I'm not being disrespectful to any of you, but guess what? Unless you live at 16156 Sherwin Court or any of the Sherwin Courts without a garage, I don't even have a deck. So even if I wanted to pile trash on it, I don't even have a deck. Our neighbors have decks, they won't even put theirs on it, they keep it out on the sidewalk. So guess what? That tells me that somebody's not doing their job because if there are rules in keeping our communicating, our community looking nice, why isn't it being done? And if we have to go to a smaller one, guess what? It might make it easier for somebody else, but we still have yellow and blue trash cans sitting all over our neighborhood, looking horrible. So if it was my decision, I'd say, hey, build the corral down where the visitor spots are. You don't even let us use them anyway. So build them down there and gate it off and make, and put it nice and neat and then, or a dumpster where I can go and I can throw my trash over in the dumpster or I can help my neighbor, this lady here, her mom, call me, I'll come and I'll take the trash and do it for her. That's what neighborhoods do. That's what I expect you all to do for us as our neighbors, as our representatives, to make sure that our townhouse community stays beautiful like the rest, like that great big old beautiful Mormon church that was just built, that great big old beautiful neighborhood next to it where you don't see red and yellow sitting in front of their houses. I want my community to be just as important as those communities are.
They're in Truasberg.
Period.
Yeah, they're in Truasberg.
Wherever they are, they got some back here that are single. So with that, I just hope that you, I have to leave, I'm sorry. But with that, I hope that you take us seriously and I will be in touch.
And we will, we will, we will look into it. Did you want to say something?
Thank you for your time.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just a quick question. Do they have, I'm, I'm sure we're not the first to, to go to fully automated or, I wonder if there's any like historical data or, or anything that they have on issues of going to fully automated because as you guys said earlier, there's, there's probably gonna be some instances where they may have to get out of the truck or...
Well, we, we've actually brought that up. I mean, early on, back whenever it first came up, that we have streets, even the mayor lives on Constitution and there's, I mean, if he puts out his trash cans and leaves and some in parks in front of them, obviously his trash isn't gonna get picked up that day or else they're gonna have to get out of, of the vehicle to, to move the cans to pick them up. So yeah, we, we're well aware and it's probably gonna take one, two, three cycles before we figure out where all the problems and the glitches are that we have to take care of. And we already have identified, obviously, your area, South Front Street and some of the other areas where there's limited parking or parking on both sides of the street, so...
Okay.
You ready?
Sure.
I, I think we have to, this isn't ideal for everybody, but I think you have to realize where we would have been, we're talking about two pickups a week. What was the difference? At the end of five years, it would have gone up, I think, a million dollars?
A million percent more.
A million dollars for a trash pickup at the end of five years. We're trying to keep the residents in mind from a financial standpoint too, where yes, cutting back to one a week might be intrusive to some families, but to others where there are four or five people living in the house, that 69-gallon tote is ideal for them. My wife and I, we don't need it. Her mother does. Her mother needs the smaller totes and I think we have to give Penn Waste a little bit of credit because they didn't have to come back to this borough and say, look, we understand you have a problem, we are more than willing, we will go ahead and buy and substitute a smaller container for you that will also work with a one-man pickup. They can't get help. People complained last year, our trash... They can't get help. People complained last year, our trash wasn't picked up. If people don't come to work, your trash isn't gonna get picked up. Now they've got one person to worry about showing up, instead of three.
You're gonna have to wrap it up, Ken.
I'm sorry. So we're, I, I think you have to give us a little credit in trying here, and Penn Waste, and let us work together with the Borough Manager to try to get this worked out.
Very well said.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay. Anything else?
I'm here about the inner governmental draft, but I think you're...
We're on the agenda, and I wait for that. Yeah, that'd probably be the easiest. Okay. Next up is approval of minutes for meeting in December.
Motion that we approve the December twelfth, twenty-twenty-two, for meeting minutes.
Second. The motion is second to approve the minutes for December twelfth. Is there any discussion, corrections, changes?
Yeah, a couple additions. On page six, under EMS fire and funding, Kim did report that, notified them that they had to contact Shrewsbury Borough and Shrewsbury Township to coordinate with them to get the thirteen thousand contingent matching funds.
Oh, for the chase trucks?
So I think that should be there. Yes.
Yeah, that's very important. I've been discussing that at every Rose Fire meeting.
On page five, resolution approval summit, our submission of the HO2 grant. That's all there. I think what's left out is that it's a two-point-four million dollar project, and that grant will cover fifty percent. I mean, that's important information. Being it pertains directly to the grant. Let the people know that this grant will get fifty percent of it. Page four, resolution amending fee for refuge and recycling. We have discussed this tonight, and I think it should be in there, that we spoke of. It, the fee is going up to eighty-five dollars. The fee amount should be in there. So that people know what the resolution is setting. And right above that, the fire tax, it says that we approved the fire tax to two-point-oh-oh mils, but the fire tax was left out. So that needs to be included. The fire tax is point-two-eight. And that the tax rate combined will be two-point-two-eight.
I think it would be nice to include the sewer, sewer rent also in that. So if people go back through the minutes, they can find where we decided and what we decided. But the resolution says that, doesn't it? They don't have access to it.
That's not true.
They do, they, this makes it easier for somebody that goes to...
If we're worried about people reading this on the website, council has already asked that these resolutions be linked. So when this is posted to the website, the PDF has a linked page to that resolution. So your minutes are to be what the action item was. If someone wants to research and find what the core leaseuren is, they'll be able to click on that resolution amending fee title, and that'll take them to the resolution. That was something the council asked for, so.
I see what you're saying.
I just think it would be a little easier to have.
If it comes to...
You asked without the help?
I, I understand that, but to add that what it is, we spoke about it, and that's specific information to it. Why wouldn't you want to put, I mean, I shouldn't have to argue, amending the minutes. Why wouldn't you wanna have that the fire tax is point-two-eight? Why wouldn't you want to have complete, accurate information?
Because the ordinance sets forth what the miller's rates are. And Andy's absolutely right. The minutes are to be a reflection of what action was taken. It doesn't have to be recitation of all the details, as long as it points you to the right place. And if you're, if you're hyperlinking it, all you have to do is click on the ordinance, and there you got it, you've got it.
I mean, otherwise your minutes are gonna get to be volumes. And that's not necessary with the links.
It's four words, fire tax, point-two-eight percent. I mean, I don't understand, I don't believe it's volumes. And the last thing, at the top of page four, number six, it says, for the tasteful occasions lease, it says clarified a key to the kitchen in section ten, that is missing from the lease. So I just wanted to point that out.
Anything else? Okay, changes noted. All in favor?
Aye.
Vows? My vote is aye. Treasurers' report.
Motion that we approve the treasurer's report for December twenty-twenty-two, second.
The motion is second. Any questions or discussion?
On page four, for Glen Rock Street sweeping, how many days or hours was that? For the twelve-hundred-and-eighty dollars? Was it one day they had it, or?
It was one day.
One day?
No, it was multiple. Sixteen hours.
Sixteen hours.
Anything else?
Yeah. On page eight, the JM Smucker sale, was that?
Nutrient credits for treatment.
Nutrient, right. Could something like be put in there that's more descriptive there? I don't think sometimes. Over on page twelve, for the November pickleball rental, and then the December pickleball rental, in the memo, the descriptions are different, and then their numbers are different, but they're both two-hundred. Are there different like accounts?
No, that's the numbers, the receipt number.
The receipt number? Okay, so I see the scouts had same number, so it must have been on a receipt?
It could have been on one receipt, yeah.
Okay.
You're talking about in the memo line?
Yeah, the middle there. And then on the bottom one, it says the account for the pickleball, the rental was auditorium and kitchen. They rented the kitchen?
No, that should be under three-sixty-seven, nine-fifty, not nine-hundred-forty.
Yeah, under nine-fifty. Okay, so you'll correct that?
Yeah.
To be under nine, nine-fifty? Okay.
All right, go ahead.
On page thirteen, the engineering plan review for fourteen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-one. What plan were those?
That was, that was either the VFW plan, or, I'm sorry, what page were you on again?
Uh, thirteen. Some of these pages aren't numbered, so I put my own numbers, yeah. There's...
Yeah, that was a plan review for the VFW.
For VFW. Do we get ream, who pays that, Porty? We pay that?
The developer. We pay it first, and we get reimbursed.
We get reimbursed from the developer. Okay. And then reimbursement for health insurances for Wade and Brenda? I didn't know we reimburse for health insurance.
Just for, just for the deductible. We reimburse the deductible as five-hundred individual, one-thousand family. The Borough reimburses two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a year, up to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a year of the deductible. And that's basically just to keep the cost down on the cleaning.
Okay. And the HVAC service at the bottom, six-thousand, was that something here that had to do with the...
Community center?
It was community center. Four-fifty-two, fifty-two indicates recreation, community center.
How come I didn't go on there? Expense?
Because the fund doesn't have enough to pay for that. The community center fund doesn't have enough to pay that bill.
So there was one over there, I thought, that not...
Yeah.
Is there?
Yeah, last page.
So there was enough to cover that HVAC?
Yes.
Nine-hundred. So six-thousand, nine-hundred, nearly seven-thousand dollars in HVAC service for December, for the community center. You said you were looking into the brains to replace it? Do you have any update on that?
Uh, yeah, we received the price and authorized that work. Because we're not able to actually manipulate the system at all at this point. So we had to authorize that work to be completed, and that was five-thousand-five-hundred dollars.
Five-thousand-five-hundred, and that was to fix this so we don't have HVAC bills every month?
Well, I can't guarantee that, but that should help.
So we cannot change the brains? You have to buy a whole, brand-new system?
Well, this is changing the program. This is changing the, again, if you will, the brain of the system, so that it's compatible with the current operating system and able to be manipulated. Right now, functionality is very limited.
It's unfortunate, but it's something that has to be done. They're playing pickleball, and the air conditioning is coming on, and it's thirty-eight degrees outside. Guess what it is in there? You know, it's in, it's fifty-some degrees. You know, same thing, playing bingo. Nobody wants to play bingo in fifty-four degree, you know? They just have to get it working.
At the top of page fourteen, there's fifteen-hundred dollars in repair and maintenance. What building was that for? Was that here for the roof, or? But that was a different company, that's why I was questioning it. Was that stuff the roofing company? Very top, the first two charges, total fifteen-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars.
Oh, the four-fifty-two, three-seventy-three?
No.
Account?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, those were for light fixtures, to switch out the LED fixtures.
And what building was that?
I mean, that's a four-fifty-two, so it's community center.
Okay, for the community center. And do we always get the engineering fees back from people? Because I see a lot of engineering fees.
Only for subdivision land development plans.
For subdivision.
What happened to Weathersfield?
That's actually VFW plan.
Oh, okay.
Property, property is Weathersfield.
All right.
And where are we at in the codification process? We've been working on that for a while, codifying.
Well, that's just updated. As ordinances get adopted, we send them in to general credit to be codified.
So that's just prep, though, so thirty-nine-hundred dollars just for present?
That would have been, that would have been back to the last update that I do. And I do that about four to five times a year, or as we get more ordinances.
And then the last one on this page is the donation to Rose and Fire, the twenty-three-thousand-five-hundred. Was that due to the past fire tax that got involved, or?
No, that's just the allocation that was in the budget.
To get in...
Just a general donation.
That was the training, and...
Ten thousand of that was for training, the other amount was just general donation.
Okay. And I believe the last thing is on the community center. He spent fifteen-hundred dollars for ten cleanings. That will, ten cleanings, we paid Allison fifteen-hundred dollars, a hundred-and-fifty dollars a pop to clean that community center. That is gonna bankrupt. I mean, between the gas, electric, and the cleaning, that's three-thousand-three-hundred-and-one dollars for the month.
We had talked about that coming out of the deposit, is that, has that happened?
This is just the routine, routine plan to try to keep it up. I mean, I, I don't know that we're gonna...
So we had discussed it.
The building is actually clean right now. We've had no complaints from anyone about the condition of the property. At some point, we have to...
That's not, fifteen...
I'm confused, I'm confused, because we had discussed, when somebody pays, what is, what's the security deposit?
This is just for cleaning. This has nothing to do with people's rent.
Yeah, it's not.
Cleaning after a rental, it's just cleaning. I can clean this building once a week.
So she's supposed to come every Thursday, four times a month, but she came ten times in December.
No, she's cleaning twice a week, because of the number of rentals. No, she's cleaning twice a week because of the rentals on the weekend, too, so we're catching that. So it's ready for the week, and we're... One, one cleaning a week, we've had complaints on.
Okay. So you talked about the spot cleaning fee that is done. And then you talked about you rolled in a non-refundable fee into the three-fifty or the six-hundred when they rent the community center, right? There's a non-refundable fee.
Are we doing that?
Twenty-five dollars.
Wait a second, it just started January first. We're talking about November and December here.
Well, I understand, but, so we're charging a non-refundable fee in their rental fee of the community center auditorium for twenty-five dollars, and turning around and laying out a hundred-and-fifty dollars for her to come clean?
Not, we're not initiating that additional cleaning. And that twenty-five dollars is non, is... Well, the refundable part is to be for the key fob system as well.
So are you, are you refunding back? Isn't there a hundred-and-fifty-dollar deposit for cleaning? And if they leave it clean, they get it back? And if they don't leave it clean, they don't get it back? Is that how it works?
If there are issues and it's not kept clean, currently, no, we do not get it back.
So did nobody get a cleaning fee back in December?
Well, just right under that Hillary Groves system for a hundred dollars.
How many times was the community center running in December, would you say?
I don't know. I don't have that information. I can get it for you after the meeting.
I'm just saying, this is not attainable, spending this amount of money for cleaning, and that if she's having to come back and clean, then nobody should be getting their security deposit back. And if she does have to come and clean...
She's cleaning just for the normal operations of that building.
For pickleball, for senior center. The senior center, people that are using the building.
Sure, but I don't see, she only cleans the common areas, the auditorium, the bathroom, and the hallway. Taking three to four hours each time, from what I'm told. If she does one good cleaning during Thursday, or Monday, or whatever you want her to, I don't see her having to come back that week, getting another hundred-and-fifty. Maybe the twenty-five dollars from the non-refundable fee after it was rented, or fifty dollars. I don't see her having to spend another three to four hours that same week having to clean. Something needs to change with this here.
Would you like to add that as an agenda item for next month?
Well, we keep talking about it, if that's what it has to be, and...
Well, I think that's what we should, because this doesn't really have anything to do with treasurer's report, per se.
Okay.
So why don't we add as an agenda item?
It's for the amount, but we can put it on for the agenda item and talk about it.
The amount's already been paid. We're not gonna reel it back in, so.
True, but I brought it up now.
We can discuss, you know, the community center as a whole, and how it's used, and...
I think so. And the council can come back with some good ideas.
All right, and then let's add that to the next month's agenda, community center cleaning.
Yeah. Because it's just, that's too much.
Any overall reasoning, Drew, that we seem to be having a continued problem with delinquencies on utilities? It just keeps going up and up and up every month. And I know she works very hard at it, but...
Well, this is actually, I mean, this is a, an average, basically. I mean, the average used to be sixty to sixty-eight thousand dollars.
I know, we were down to twenty now, or below twenty, now we're back up over forty. And you can see by the chart how much it's gone up since May. It went from twenty thousand to forty-one thousand, it doubled. Well, X plus seven dollars doesn't, so. And you gotta look all over the, I mean, that's across the board.
People, people chose to buy Christmas presents instead of pay their water bill, so.
Okay, so, but we, she's still on top of that?
Yeah, we still, we still post, still send notices out. So the other thing you have to look at is the rolling of bill cycle every month, too. So just as you're starting the shut-off procedures on one, your other ones are going thirty days past, too. So it kind of keeps...
Yeah, that's what I was trying to say, you have an average, and it does fluctuate.
Yeah, through the month, it'll go up and down. What we pull it as at the end of the month, if they're thirty days past, too. I think that's what this report is showing.
Do you think the, a number of people, do they reach out to the borough for some kind of hardship at Christmas time? Or at particular time, trying to get an extension?
We set up payment plans.
Yeah, we set up payment plans, and usually tread lightly on notices and shut-offs around the holidays. There are assistant programs. Actually, there was a pretty lengthy assistance program that's inspired, but there are programs to be able to help out residents.
Perfect, thank you.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Vows? My vote is aye. Do we have anything back?
I mean, at large, Goodfellow Park, it's just still in process, right?
We're still working on that, if there's anything else.
Okay, sign regulations? We don't have anything yet, what do we do?
Solicitor Jones, we have a, we have a meeting set for later this month to go over a couple of changes in that draft before we present back to council. So, I believe the hope is now we can get that cleaned up and have a good meeting.
Stormwater channel, Mark Constitution out there?
Yeah, no update. There is response due January eighteenth from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service on that application. So, that was sixty days, sixty days to respond. It was initially sent on November eighteenth, so, just rough.
That's the, that's the HEDI property, right?
Yes, correct.
Fishing wildlife, because you can't even fish in somebody's backyard if they have a site? Because it's a stormwater channel and could have an acquired species.
It is now, it'll grow turtles and then you're...
What are they expected to say?
You have to go through the process.
Well, I know, but I mean, what, do they just say, it's okay?
Yes.
Yeah, they'll move forward?
Yeah.
Eventually give us a, give us a permit, but it's just...
That is ridiculous.
It's a box to check.
Pretty much.
Handicap parking space?
At the last meeting, council requested some additional information. So office staff provided that information in your packet concerning eleven South Thorg Street. There were questions about current coverage, what's allowable coverage, what a handicap parking space or parking pad would look like on the property. So you have that information in front of you tonight, you can reveal.
There wasn't any way to check to see if the garage could be used as, because they had access to the garage.
That's, yeah, that's outside, I mean, if they use it for storage and if they can pull a car in, that's...
That's this picture here. I don't see a...
Get before...
Church Island.
You can see it on the top picture, in the red, it's in the back. Well, that's what I thought, and then all of a sudden, I'm looking at the other one and I see the garage.
If she were to put a ten-by-ten-foot pad in, that's only a hundred square feet. She has a lot of coverage of additional square footage, it'd be a hundred and fifty-three square feet. So, I don't see why we would...
Ten-by-ten pads don't provide for a vehicle.
Yeah, that would be...
Ten by...
But it's still on the...
Ten by twelve, I mean, she has more than enough feet there and to take parking away from others on a small street like that, I think you'd be setting a real precedent.
A vote to, in a sense, do not have a spot?
I would, people would...
Well, I, I think you should probably turn it down, you said table, you should let them know that you're not doing it.
Yeah, I don't think we should leave something hanging.
I think that's a problem. No, who's an answer?
Okay, well, I think we can make a motion that we notify the applicant we feel that onsite parking would be better than putting a handicap parking spot in front of the residents. And the reason, if we want to give them a reason, the reason would be, it would be a severe impact to other neighbors' parking.
I'm going to caution you though on that motion? Because you're going to have to do this for every property where someone comes in and requests a handicap parking space to analyze the property that they live on and whether or not they have the same possibility of onsite and that you don't want to impamper other people from having parking spaces taken away. You can't, you can't treat one...
Case by case.
It is, yes.
I, I think you better be very careful with the ADA, Americans with Disabilities.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know that I followed you.
What's your, what's your suggestion?
If this lady comes back and says, I have a handicap and you guys have denied me and you don't do that to somebody else, you are going to have a suit under the Americans with Disabilities Act.
So you should think we should just say...
I, I think if you want to turn it down, that's fine, but you're doing a whole analysis on this property. So the next person that comes in, you're going to go, yeah, we'll give it to you, we feel bad for you. You, you, you make sure you treat them the same way, maybe case by case. You better go through the same process.
I think it would. I don't think we would treat the next one any differently than we treat this one.
Well, I don't think, we don't want to take away parking from somebody else in comparison to someone who has a handicap who needs a parking space. If you think it's because they have onsite parking available, that's one thing.
Well, they do, they have a garage and they have enough for...
I think just change the wording, just leave, leave some of those words out.
Correct, I don't think it should be based on, we want to preserve public parking in front of your house.
Gotcha.
So based on the availability of surface coverage on your lot?
Yeah. All right, then we can say...
Amend yourself, I guess.
Okay. So the...
I would just say a motion to deny the parking, the handicap parking request for this property. And just leave it at that.
All right, so moved.
I'll go first.
And a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
My vote is aye. Okay, quality of life ordinance. With everyone's permission, can we swap the quality of life, which is probably going to take some time, and go ahead and talk about the intergovernmental agreement for RAC? Just so we can move it up a little bit in the agenda?
Thank you.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Have you had a chance to look at Todd's?
I did, I'm going to go outside as well. Okay. Thank you for sending me, I'm Mary Ann Michaels, President of New Freedom Recreation Commission. I also have Sharon Boyle here, who is our treasurer. Our concern with the intergovernmental draft between New Freedom and Shrewsbury Township is the reduction of seats from our current four to two plus a liaison. This would eliminate two of our current seated members. The liaison typically does not help with the events. The purpose of the RAC Commission has been to provide community input as to desired RAC activities, to organize and staff the activities. For the past five years, we have grown the RAC council to four. We believe this number to be necessary for the following reasons. To get the proper diversity of community input and skills. The council, the council are all volunteers and cannot always participate in every meeting or activity. And to have a critical mass, we need four members. To actually staff the events, we need four people and many times recruit other volunteers to help. I would argue that the reason there are seven Borough Council members is very similar. And if there was an intergovernmental agreement between New Freedom Borough and Shrewsbury Township, I think each and every one of you would want to sit on the board to represent New Freedom. I read Todd's email. Shrewsbury Township does not have a recreation commission and, to my knowledge, never has had a recreation commission. We are doubling our territory and how do you think we could successfully run a RAC Commission with less members? And everyone is saying to me that this is now six members, but it really isn't. It's going to be four members and then two liaisons who don't typically run events. And in my personal opinion, with RAC, and he gives comparisons that I don't think equal what RAC does. I don't think you can look at the police commission and the fire department commission and all that and compare it to RAC, ever. I mean, they're not the same thing, it's apples and oranges.
The police commission, people don't normally go out and do police work. So, yeah, I agree with you.
Right, so everyone of the, and to me, the more the merrier. If we end up, and I think it's wonderful, I think we need a RAC director. I think we, the intergovernmental agreement is great. But if we, we need, in my opinion, four to five members from each one. And if you end up with twenty-five people on a board because you pulled in five communities or municipalities, then that's twenty-five ideas, twenty-five activities, twenty-five things, getting kids out of the house and playing. So...
Marion, the issue we usually have is not having enough people. So when we did this in Spring Grove with Jackson Township and some other places, and then we did it, I did it also with Jacovus, Loganville, Springfield, they were having trouble filling the board. It wasn't that they had too many, they didn't have enough and they couldn't meet because they'd have a quorum. So that's one reason I've often seen that they've reduced that. The other thing is, you don't have to do the work, because they're going to hire staff. So, you don't need the RAC Commission members to staff events. You're kind of having oversight. So it kind of alleviates some of what you have to do as a part of a RAC board now.
Yeah, I'd, I'd have to respectfully disagree a little bit, because, I mean, you're going to still have... I mean, they're going to build a tennis court. You may have to staff up, you may need volunteers to help do things. There's going to be committees. I mean, where, you know, you're going to have maybe a concert committee that might be two people from Shrewsbury and two people, and those committees can be smaller groups too. I think, I think that the problem that Todd is running into is he's thinking he's probably going to have trouble filling the positions. And I think what we can do or what, I mean, I thought about this a little bit before the meeting. I would, I would make a motion that we allow ten volunteer members, four plus one. But that the, from each community, four, four plus...
So we can keep our four plus one?
Yeah, we can keep the four plus one.
I really do not want to lose mine.
Right, and I, and I agree, but I think where we're going to, the only compromise I think we have to make or that I would suggest is that, that we get as many votes as however they staff Shrewsbury Township.
And I would agree with that.
So like, if they have three, then we can't all vote, because obviously, they're going to be kind of taking over.
That's reasonable to me, I just want, we worked hard to establish that.
And I would, I would make that motion then, that we, we change to be to a lot consist of, up to, because it is an up to, ten volunteer members with five from each, each area. And put words in here that says, basically, that each municipality would only get the same number of votes. However you want to word that, so that, you know, if you have three from Shrewsbury and three from New Freedom, that would be your voting. The other ones would be basically members of the community, but they would be members at large. And then, yeah, and they would tell you how they would want to vote.
Can, can, how's that make, how do you use it, at-large members? You could change it to, if you want, you, at-large is really anybody, you know?
No, I think it's specific that she wants to carry the group.
So which, which three get to vogue if we have five?
Well, I think what it's going to come down to, and I think that's a reasonable explanation, is that if, and my thing that I'm really sitting on here is, Todd probably doesn't think. He doesn't know, hasn't tried, has, doesn't know. He might end up with twenty people and have to turn away some, he doesn't know.
We did this in Spring Grove with Todd and we didn't have twenty.
No, I know, but I mean, you don't know that you're not going to have four, four is not a lot.
You don't, but I guess, I don't know how you work the voting. Like, they have three members and you have five.
And I have five, so then my five have to, you know, maybe we all agree, so our three votes are in favor of whatever we're...
What if they're split? I mean, you're assuming everyone's going to agree, what if they're, what if you have two members and you don't agree and three?
You just decide, you would have to decide at the beginning of the meeting, when you get together, if you have five from New Freedom and three from Shrewsbury Township, you would have to say, well, Mary Ann and Rich and Ryan are going to vote. And you would just decide that at the beginning of the meeting.
And at the end of the day...
And it would continue for that meeting.
I can tell you, my twenty-two years of practicing law in municipalities, we have never had that with a...
Well, I mean, if you could, if you could get the United States House to sit and say, oh, we have one Republican and one Democrat, let's pass a bill. I think the weak of the problem, like, figure...
After they've given up all the rights to...
Well, when you're thinking, honestly, when you're thinking about this, you think...
Hey, Mary Ann.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're okay.
Hey, girl. I was just going to say, we're adults, I know our little group does well together. Why doesn't everybody just let that decision be amongst the four or five people on the panel?
Unfortunately, I've seen groups of adults who can't agree on anything.
Wouldn't always be the same people.
Yeah, that's the other, it won't always be you four or five.
If they designate three permanent voting members, I'd have to know you have...
If you want to, I, I, I guess in all honesty, they're, they're public meetings. So all four of you can be at every meeting.
Right, well, and all four of us want to vote, because we have four and four.
Yeah, but if only three of you are voting anyways, you're leaving two people out, right?
Well, but, I mean, it's possible that you would get five people from Shrewsbury Township, in which case you'd have five and five.
We would work it out, and you know what, at the end of the day, I'm hoping that, we're trying to come up with programs and activities. I can't imagine, I honestly can't imagine, I want to have a dance. And I was saying, oh, no, we're not having a dance, we can't have a dance, I don't believe in that. You know, I just don't see that issue even happening.
I, I think, I think in all honesty, this is really such a good thing. I mean, I was on the Southern Regional RAC back when it fell apart, because there was so much headbutting. This is a good thing, I think we should move forward with it. I don't think it's a big deal to have five and five.
I appreciate that.
With, just to put the words in that at no time will any municipality have more votes than another municipality. Those words would, and then you could decide at the meeting who's going to vote.
That's perfectly wonderful.
I mean, and you should be able to put some, put a couple of legal words in there, change my jailhouse.
Couple of wear-ashes, you'd be good to go.
So are we going to stagger?
Andy, if I wanted to pass a resolution tonight and I wanted you all to vote on it?
I'm sorry?
If I wanted to pass a resolution tonight, or you all to pass a resolution, but I don't want everyone to vote on it, which one of you isn't voting?
Or whoever turned it up.
Well, we're, we're, the big, the big difference is that we're elected officials and this is an appointed commission. So, we're appointing these people to go in and, and do something good. And I, all that I'm saying is, I mean, obviously, we're teaming with another municipality. So, if they, they're only going to have three, we can't come in with five votes and say, because, you know, I mean, let's say we do.
I mean, we'll discuss it and figure, we'll figure it out.
So that, you know, I think you could, I think that, like you said, you're, we're adults, I think you should be able to figure out easily, yeah.
Yeah, but, again, what if you have three members on New Freedom and you have two members on New Freedom and they don't agree? Who gets to vote?
We'll figure it out.
I know you're saying, we're all reasonable adults, we can work it out, but if you...
What I would say, honestly, is I've got, I know the four people I have, okay?
And how long will they be on the board?
How long have they been on the board?
How long will they be on the board?
He's saying twenty years from now.
I think...
Somebody could put them next year.
I understand that, but people die, people have, move away, people do whatever, so...
I mean, what, I, we're talking about now, okay?
All right, why don't, why don't, why don't we do it? Why don't we do it this way?
Right, and then...
We could have three members and two members at large that are not voting. And just make it the same.
That's fine, if you want to call them at-large or alternates.
I want the four, all four that are on there, the original, that's what I would, I would like what you said originally, with the four. And then if there is a, if they only get three, then we'll work it out and we'll just have three votes.
What would provide the flexibility as far as the terminology of the extra people? At-large?
Members at large, yeah.
I think it really comes down to this, what powers do you want the four members to have as a part of this?
I want them to all, you know, us to collectively, you know, run programs.
But, but you're okay with one of those members or two of those members not having a vote?
If it comes down to, I'll withdraw my own vote. I won't have a vote and I'll say, you're the three that are up, you three are the ones up.
So, I mean, then what's the problem with saying they're at-large members who will not vote?
Could have been changed, I mean, I don't see why it can't be situational.
Yeah, I can't, I don't see why, your original...
Because I've seen, I've seen, I've seen recreation groups fall apart over not being able to agree among themselves. I honestly have, I mean, I can think of Jacovus, Logan, Springfield, and I can show you minutes from meetings for five years that all we talked about was...
Then I don't think we should pursue the center governmental agreement, if that's the case.
What are you giving up if you have, if you have three members and they have three members and all three of you vote?
I'm giving up a member of my recreation...
But they can come to the meeting and they can contribute and they can say their piece and they can talk to somebody.
What should matter, I mean, they should be a member of this. What should matter, they should be a member of this. They should be a member of this.
But you're saying you're okay with them not having a vote?
I'm saying I'm okay with, if they have three and I have five, us five will talk to each other and hopefully we are in unison, okay? Hopefully we say we're three yays. And if this goes the way it's supposed to go, we shouldn't have argumentative, I'm not gonna do this, I'm not gonna do this, and we're gonna go against Shrewsbury Township, okay? Hopefully, we will all come together and move forward.
That's fine, and I, we can write it that way.
Five people in their township that will.
Has Shrewsbury Township advertised this?
It's a very, it's a, it's a.
Approving the agreement, I think, to move forward.
Did I see Shrewsbury advertise something?
They, they have, within sixty days of their notice, they have indicated that their supervisors were going to adopt appointments per municipality. If there are changes to be made that are pretty minute in nature, Solicitor Jones, I think, could probably weigh in, and their solicitor could weigh in whether that would have to be re-advertised. I would think a couple little changes would not.
Is changing the number of people on the board a little change?
I, I would argue it's not, that's like saying, that's changing the constituency of the base board, I mean, that's pretty material to.
Why, why did Shrewsbury Township advertise before we were ready?
That was their choice.
They didn't consult with you on that?
I did not tell them to advertise, I did not tell their supervisors to.
Well, yeah, they didn't consult with you before advertising it?
We had discussions on how this timeline would play out. They were going to authorize advertisement in December, we were hoping to as well, back at the late, they authorized it ahead of our authorization.
Well, they meet before we do.
But I think something should have been in there that no one can, you know, publicly. I think there should have been something saying, no one can publicly post us until you guys agree to it, until the draft was finalized, I'm like, I can't believe that you posted it in the Facebook.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, obviously.
Why does, why does that, why does that matter at this point?
Because we're working together, remember, we're coming together, the partnership, we're in a partnership, but they're advertising, we're happy.
This board did not authorize advertisement, therefore it can't move forward.
But if they've advertised it now, when we make this minute, not minute change, they've gotta re-advertise, so it sounds like they should.
That's their problem, that's not our problem.
Yeah, but, but let's, let's just get back.
Okay, yeah, all right.
Let me ask you a question though on, on that, so let's say you have five members and they have three members and one of their members is absent.
We said that we, the vote goes to, like, we can't, we can't overpower and like, we can't bully them.
And you get a minimum of three votes then.
Well, see, that's what, we, we have to be very careful.
So then we, that's not a quorum then, right, so would that be not a quorum?
Well, we have to be very. Because I'm missing somebody.
Yeah, that, we have to be very careful about how.
Would that be not a quorum?
You would have a quorum, but that's my point, is, is we have to be very careful about how we draft this. If you'd like to do this, borough councils like to make this change, we need to understand what we're saying, because it's not simply, if you got two guys in the room, we have two guys in the room, we get two, even though you have three members and we have five.
Right.
That's, I, I just, I wanna understand what you guys want to do as a borough council.
I'm just trying to keep, keep their great agenda. That's the only thing I was trying to do.
I appreciate that, and I was like.
Why couldn't you have alternates?
You, you can, but Mary Ann's sake doesn't want her, and she wants, she wants to have voting members.
I wanna stay intact, because we need this many members, I've been on rec.
But you're not saying voting members though, because you're willing to give up their votes.
I'm giving up a vote if that's necessary, if they don't have enough people. That's where we're giving up the vote. I'm hoping that they'll be able to.
Who do you like to drink? Do you like alcoholic beverages at all?
I water, why?
Okay. I will bet a bottle of wine until, until you get, you're not have a bet that you will have some sort of disagreement on your.
Have to be bourbon.
Yeah. Why is it a first year? I can almost guarantee it, but that's, I'll write it however you guys want to, I just wanna understand what we're trying to write, because.
You write it the way Andy said it, and then if we have any arguments, I'll buy you your favorite drink. Okay?
I, I don't see any, any, any other way to do it, it doesn't, it doesn't, I mean, is it gonna create a problem? I, I don't think so.
I don't, I really don't.
I mean, I really don't think it will. You think they'll be able to pull five members? Shrewsbury Township? I don't know.
But at least they'll give them the option.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, you know, I think.
I think we've already won.
I mean, Jen, Jen lives in Shrewsbury Township, so you've got one.
Yeah, could go and her and tell her to join, yeah, and grab all her friends, she has a whole pile of friends.
I just have a real quick question, I'm, some of this, I'm still not a hundred percent sure about. Um, the comment was made, well, it's not that big of an issue, because it's not like you're gonna be doing all the work, we're gonna be hiring people. Okay, so what exactly does that mean?
I'm not, I'm, I'm not, I didn't make that statement, so, but I'll, I'll tell you what I think. I, I mean, the way I see this working is, you guys are gonna come up with an idea. Let's say a concert series.
Right.
You're gonna tell the rec director, we wanna have a concert series. Somebody might have some bands that they know or recommend or whatever, and the rec director's gonna go off and find out and call a booking agent and book the bands. And get the advertisements together and, you know, it's gonna be a cooperative effort. Tennis is going to be basically you. I mean, you may need to increase your staff, if you, if they build a tennis court over there, you might be in two locations. I, I don't know how that's gonna work. Um, let's say we have a chili cook-off and it's gonna be here, you know, that's probably gonna take a lot of people. You might form a committee for the chili cook-off and you might have eight people on that committee.
Well, I, I have a, my, I think, to redirect my question, I guess my concern is, I know that Mary Ann, Lisa, Rich and I have done a number of activities the past two years here in town. And so this commission is to bring other communities together, which is how you got the money to help, you know, it's the, I'll get the money, but these are my promises I have agreed to do this to work collectively with other towns.
Correct.
Fine and dandy, so here we are, our little group of four, and we have us and, you know, we're trying to stay together, we're trying to do what we can for our community, but we're willing to, to do whatever we're directed to do. If Shrewsbury is saying, well, I'm sorry, we can only come up with two or three, and we have four volunteers. Now, as this committee thing, they say, hey, we'd like to plan a such-and-such event, we want to be able to use New Freedom's facilities and everything else, but we don't have enough people to staff it. Are, then we, are we like, purchase labor?
No.
For a better way?
No, no.
I mean, agreement provides that you can hire employees, the commission can hire employees to provide services, including leaders, directors, whatever the case may be. So it's not just on you as volunteers to do that.
That's what I was wondering, if they're struggling to come up with even just three people who are willing to commit time.
No, I think it's, it's to program, to program recreational events, to do oversight, come up with a budget, it's really not to do that stuff, it's to come up with the ideas, the programming, so on and so forth. So your volunteers don't have to run. Because that is becoming an issue all over the, all over the state and the country where volunteers aren't as committed or plentiful or whatever the case may be in the past. So there's money here to hire somebody and fund this and so on and so.
Who's paying to staff these events? Who's paying these people?
Well, look, come up with a budget, come back to the township and the, and the borough. And they'll say, we need X amount of dollars, and then you're gonna have.
And there could be a small charge, where, where there's a charge for tennis, and that's how we pay the tennis people. It'd be the same, same business model.
Right, you have, how many people at any given time helping with tennis?
Um, usually six.
Six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it'd be the same thing, it's not any different.
Yeah.
So this is gonna come out of our general fund to fund this, if they're not making enough money?
It could, if, if, I mean, does this help other, if governmental recreation groups work?
It's expensive, it's, it's.
They try to program as much as possible and have it self-fund itself, but there's oftentimes an offset from the municipality to provide recreational services. And that is not uncommon, that is.
Yeah, I think the borough, you guys helped us out when we had some of the dances, we had the team dances. Um, if we were short, you know, if we didn't bring in enough to cover.
And I, I told, I mean, Ryan and I told Mary Ann a long time ago, if they came up with an idea that they wanted, that, that we would, you know, pony up and help, help with the funding, that's, that's no different. And doing all along. I think it's just gonna be a little bigger.
So the salary that's paying this rec director, is that being funded by both the township and New Freedom Borough?
It's actually, it's actually a grant for the first four years. So it's free the first year, we pay twenty-five percent the second year, et cetera, and so for four years, it's, you know, and then hopefully, I mean, the direction to the rec director is become self-funded. I mean, we, you know, we would want programs, dances, whatever they want, can do, and those programs would eventually become self-funded. We might have a day camp in the summer for kids, and that rec director would might, you know, charge whatever is going right for day camps. And that would be part of the money that they would be bringing back in.
So on year five, you're only funded forty percent. You're short sixty percent to keep this rec board going and staffed and paid and everything else that gets involved. How is that split between us and the township, that sixty percent?
Where do you come up with year five and sixty percent?
He says we're, we get a grant until year four, so starting year five, it's gonna be up to New Freedom and the township to fund any salaries, insurances, everything, correct?
Mary, you're just saying, for instance.
I'm, that's what I just said, I'll say it again. Year five, we've only got enough funds in the rec to be able to fund forty percent. We're in a sixty percent deficit on keeping this going. How is that sixty percent being split between the township and New Freedom?
Well, there's a per capita charge.
Yeah, three fifty, right?
Right, there's, at the start of this agreement, there's a three dollar and fifty cent per capita charge to each participant.
And if that still does not cover it, if that still is not cover it, how is it split?
Well, then if it, if there's programs that are in place that aren't generating revenue to be sufficiently cut, that would be up to the rec commission at that time.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're, you know, I mean, to, to take it to the worst possible conclusion, after four years, it might go away if it can't be funded.
Or it would go up to five dollars and fifty cent, I mean, it's no different than the police commission.
So we're gonna get more out of the people?
To provide services.
Well, it's coming out of, that comes out of the general fund, correct?
Yeah, I mean, you do understand.
Plus we have rec funds that are there.
You said township, are we talking a partnership with Shrewsbury Borough or Shrewsbury Township?
Shrewsbury Township.
We're the borough, so New Freedom Borough and Shrewsbury Township.
Thank you, I assumed incorrectly, having the discussion.
No, hopefully Shrewsbury Borough may come on board with this. Yeah, I mean, I think if we can show we're doing good.
Glen Rock Railroad.
But who, it, I don't think my question's answered, if, if the per capita doesn't cover it, how is any deficit split between us, for whatever it is, how is a deficit split?
Well, they already have a higher population, so they're going to pay more.
So we're, we're splitting, so if we have a forty percent deficit, we are spending, we're gonna split that on the capita.
Yeah, but you have the right to approve the budget before the year, so if they don't show a balanced budget, you don't have to approve it.
What's this, it's going, I'm not sure we're.
Well, you, I mean, that's paragraph four of the agreement, the way it works, there's a fiscal year, a budget, and then the approval of the budget, which has the valuing bodies of the participants approve the budget, so if it's not a balanced budget, you don't approve it and they have to figure out how to, you have to go back to the drawing. It's like we do with the police commission, like every other, I don't know.
Okay, do you, do you feel you have enough, enough warrants that you could, that you could?
I guess what I would say is, is provided at the under voting, each member of the commission shall have one vote, provided whoever at no point shall any participant have more votes than there are members of any other participant, now so. It works for two, it works for two, what if we have three? So let's say Shrewsbury Borough comes on board. They have three, Shrewsbury Township has two and we have five. Do we only get two votes? And then Shrewsbury Borough only gets two votes? I mean, it gets, that's what I'm trying to figure out, so I understand.
Why don't we just say each, each member municipality gets three votes?
Because they might have three members. They might not have three members.
And somebody doesn't show up?
Well, if you don't show up, they'll show up, but they have that member that's supposed to be there.
Yeah, they don't.
But what if they only have two members?
Why would they only have two members?
Because they can't, because they can't.
But what if they have no members whatsoever?
Each, each municipality gets three votes.
It's us, you know, what if just the end of the day and all this, you have the four of us and they can't get anybody, and Shrewsbury Township can't get a soul.
Right.
What happens then?
You can't take action because it requires their, to have a quorum, you have to have at least one member from each municipality.
But they can't find anybody, so they've gone out, they've asked everybody in the entire township.
At least have their own official. So, so they'll have one.
They'll want an elected official. I like the four and the one, and then we'll work out.
I mean, keep in mind, you know, when this commission is formed, they have to come up with their own bylaws, so I mean, you're, you're gonna, you're gonna have input into all of that.
Aren't there draft bylaws?
Well, there are draft bylaws, but they have to vote on it.
The board's still.
To, to your other point, the, the item that you wanted about the meeting.
Yeah, about the date.
Yeah, that, that would be specifically in the bylaws.
Okay, so.
So, at, at that time, you would address that.
Most of it would dress up in the bylaws, not now, when it's, isn't it?
There's a draft set of bylaws that you would, on it the first time you meet.
Oh, okay, we would check, so, okay, then.
So, again, I'm just trying to write this language so that it addresses those situations where if we add somebody, so is it?
I, well, he said five and five, and then.
I'm not worried, okay, I get it, if they're five and we have five, or they have five and we have three, or whatever the case may be, I have that language, but if we have a third or a fourth member join, what is it gonna, does it need to say that whoever has the lowest number of members?
Are you talking, so the third member, you mean like Glen Rock or?
If Glen Rock or Shrewsbury Borough or whomever, that's what I'm trying to understand, Andy. It can't just be situational.
I'm wondering if you can say a minimum of three people per municipality, you can have five, but you have to have a minimum of three.
Okay, if I'm a paying member and I can only find two people, you're saying I can't sit on the, the board?
I'm saying that should be a minimum for.
To join.
To join. Like, if you wanna be part of this and you wanna, because they're not being a part of it.
Circumstances where for whatever reason, you can't get three people because someone died and someone moved away, someone's kid grabbed them.
I know, but I could sit here for the rest of my life and say, what if, and what if, and what if? And I'm like, God, a plane fell, a plane fell and it's felt and we all died.
I am telling you, this has happened in rec commissions specifically, less than ten minutes away from here. That's what I'm telling you, I'm telling you it happens on a regular basis, I'm not making this up.
I, I know, I believe you, I just am.
How big of a deal or ordeal or whatever would it be to change it later? Once, once another municipality comes on?
Well, everyone's gonna, we're gonna have to go through this again and we're gonna have to advertise the ordinance and we're gonna have to advertise it being modified, and we have to readapt an intergovernmental cooperation agreement, we're gonna have to change the bylaws, there is a work to that.
That's when, that's when I think, you know, we'll address it when it happens, but right now, we know what we have, we know what, we need to figure out if it'll work or not work, I wanna keep my people.
I'm sorry, she.
Oh, sorry.
I was just gonna say, I see a whole panel of people sitting up there. They probably have something similar in Shrewsbury Township or Glen Rock or everything else. So if all the borough councils are deciding that yes, we want to be part of this, and maybe down the line, and like you've said, maybe Glen Rock, add Loganville, whatever, what is wrong with the expectation, if they're all in agreement that they wanna do this because they feel that combining resources, as in we have a community center, that place may not, we have tennis courts, that one may not, being able to utilize everybody's stuff and everything, what's wrong with the expectation of saying, okay, we voted for this, we suddenly only have two people, we're required to have three, I'm picking one of you. You know, for them on borough council.
Because your governing document says they have to be from your community.
Well, I would think that the borough council people would be from their own community.
Again, I, I appreciate followers, how many of you have sat and counseled an intergovernmental recreation group in the last five years?
We realize that too.
Yeah, right, that's, I'm just trying to bring up practical issues that I see on a regular basis with recreation commissions, however well-intentioned you are, but if you wanna do this, tell me this, how, we're gonna stagger membership as opposed to one every three years, are we gonna do two for the first year, two for the second year, and one for the third year? Or are we gonna do?
Don't we do five, isn't it staggered five years now?
Well, it's one for every three years with, at a five-year term, but yes, so there are, you stagger them, so if we're gonna go to five members, I just need to know how to write that part too, because it's not just adding a vote and changing the number, I mean, this changes other.
How do we have an hour, Andrew, or we staggered five years, right? And then just for ticks and giggles, tell me what you've encountered on the other rec, you know, commissions that you've dealt with, Springbrough or whatever, where there was some big argument on not agreeing. What, what? What, what occurred and what was not agreed?
What program, should we have tennis? Should we have baseball? Should we have T-ball? Should we have, um, girls softball? It goes that far down. How much should we spend on T-shirts? Should we get T-shirts donated? Should we not have T-shirts donated? Should someone pay for the T-shirt? I mean, I'm telling you, this gets down to the nitty-gritty.
So they say, yeah, I mean, I understand that, I mean, so these people don't agree to that?
Yep, no, they don't. And then Shrewsbury Township says, we don't want to spend that much money, and New Freedom says, yeah, we really like that program, we like tennis, and we're gonna throw some extra money at that, and Shrewsbury Township says, hell no, we're not gonna spend extra money on that, if it doesn't fund itself, we want that to go away. Those are the kind, I mean, you have very particular ideas about how rec should be in New Freedom. You're not, it's not just New Freedom anymore, it's New Freedom and Shrewsbury Township, and then it might be New Freedom, Shrewsbury Township, and Glen Rock. Those, I mean, you get down in the weeds on some of this stuff, and I, I can't tell you how many meetings five's had.
I got another idea, why don't we just change it to, um, we'll change it to five members from each municipality, four are citizens from each municipality, they're voting members, the liaisons, which are elected officials, don't get a vote, so now you've got four voting people from each municipality, and if, if this is gonna work, and we really want to make it work, then I think Shrewsbury Township will go find four people.
That sounds very true.
Okay, so, and again, the terms of office, do you want them to stagger one per year for five years, or do you even want to have two?
No, four years, we only have four, we only have four, four voting members.
So the liaison isn't serving for a specific term, they're just serving on a...
They're just appointed, I mean, Brian can serve forever, you know, as long as he's on council, or as long as he wants to.
Okay, I...
Right?
No, but that's fine, if that's what you want to do, we'll do that. I've never, again, never drafted an intergovernmental cooperation agreement that doesn't say what the terms of every one that sits on that board should be.
But, but the liaison is an appointed possession.
Well, we said four years, so it's one person's...
An appointed non-voting.
Two thousand, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six.
Okay, so let's say, I just want to understand, if you have three members and you, as this lady said back here, one of those borough council members needs to sit and hold that position, do they get a vote or do they not get a vote?
We said they don't get a vote.
Well, because they're filling an actual position, yeah, they would get a vote. Like, if I wanted to be...
Do you understand how complicated this gets to put in a document?
Yeah, I think we're closer now, right, because we've eliminated the non-voting members, so you've got four, did you need to say anything, Myra?
No.
Okay, um, so you've got four members from each municipality that are voting, and you have an appointed liaison, and you cycle, you cycle your four voting members through their terms, and you can do it on a four-year basis.
All right, so four members, one of which can or cannot be an appointed member of borough council.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure that, I mean, the liaison is going to be appointed.
He's the third.
You could have four members from council, let's say Bernal and I and Brian and, and Eric all want to be on this commission, and we could go be on it, why, I mean, what's, it doesn't preclude us, we're still citizens.
Well, this says one of the mem, appointed members shall be an elected official of the government body, but you're saying you want to create a liaison position?
No, that's the liaison position.
That is the liaison, so...
Okay, so they're not, they're not a member.
Right, there's four members, and then the liaison must be the fifth.
All right, do you have this, Andy?
He looks thrilled.
I just think it's...
You could call me, and then, and we could talk about it.
No, I, I understand it.
I understand it perfectly, yes.
So the liaison is an appointed member of the council.
Go ahead, just talk.
Well, first, I'd like to thank the solicitor for trying to bring some sanity to this conversation because it seems unmanageable to me.
Well, it's, it's really not, I think, I mean, Mary Ann and I, I think are on the same page, I think Ryan understands what I'm trying to say. We're going to have five people sitting, one is a liaison, just like we have now, that's Ryan, and then you have four people on, from, from the commission, just like you have now, it's not gonna be any different than what we have now, a liaison and four voting members. Ryan doesn't vote.
Let me get to a question without talking over top of me again.
I'm sorry?
What do I, as a New Freedom resident, get out of this new rec board?
Well, hopefully you get a lot more recreation and a lot more opportunities, and your children will get a lot more opportunities.
But I don't know, what does Shrewsbury Township bring to the party? We have the community building, we have the playground, we have the tennis courts, three fifty a person.
Um, yeah, three fifty a person, soccer, they have soccer fields, they have lacrosse, they have, they're, they're going to build a tennis court over there.
Yeah, a huge playground up by the Amish markets.
That's one of my questions, how many parks does Shrewsbury Township have?
Do they have Miller Park or is that theirs?
Miller Park, Miller, and then...
Miller Park, Man Hill, Hanktown.
And Hanktown, yeah.
Um, there's, there's at least one or two other ones.
So I was thinking five.
Yeah, I think when I look at their webs...
There's one in, there's one in strawberry fields.
Yes. I was gonna say, 'cause a lot of ours are, I shouldn't say a lot, but few of ours are basically neighborhood parks.
They have four.
Smith Woods is basically a board issue.
Yeah.
We can't count Smith Woods.
Yeah.
It's in here, in the packet for the grant, why can't you count it?
Oh, okay. I guess if you had a rec director who wanted to do whatever, I don't understand.
Yeah, I don't know if it's gonna fly without him, but that's fine.
Can non-New Freedom or Stewartstown, I'm sorry, Stewartstown, Shrewsbury Township citizens participate in all of this stuff?
Yeah. If you look at paragraph...
Maybe get charged more.
Four C, there's a non-resident page.
I mean, get charged more.
Yeah.
We charge more for a non-resident.
Where at?
Again, paragraph four C.
Four...
You don't have it highlighted?
Oh, let me see, I'll tell you real quick here, Davey, let's see, four, see, actually, I don't, but I have the one above it highlighted, and a question mark below it, so we'll get to those.
All right.
Sorry, two quick questions.
Sure.
Working collectively, I know that if we have some equipment that they do not, let's just say that they want to have, you know, somebody, one of the other, whether it's Shrewsbury or whoever down the lane, they don't have a community center, they want to utilize ours, they're having it for events, it turns out that it was just pretty much Shrewsbury that attended, for whatever reason, and some of our stuff gets damaged. Now, we're all paying into this, and we pay, or, you know, New Freedom pays insurance, you know, as residents, part of the tax structure and everything else, to cover different things, whether it's the maintenance of the park, or the building of this equipment and everything else. So knowing that we're starting right now with what sounds like more facilities, whether they're equipment, space, buildings, whatever, we're starting, and we're paying this much of a tax structure to cover those things with insurance and everything, and you have Shrewsbury coming in, which is a smaller, they have more people, but it's smaller opportunities, you know, trying to say we have a playground, they do, but ours is this, this is that. If something gets damaged, how does that get covered? If, you know, we need to make upgrades because it's being used so much harder, the tennis courts or something are getting damaged because we have more people coming over and using, which incurs more bills for the community of New Freedom, how does that get divided?
Well, you're going to be making more money in tennis as well.
So is it only New Freedom repairing our own property, and they are responsible for repairing theirs, even if our stuff gets used much more heavily? How does that work?
They still, they still own their property, we still own our property.
Right.
Okay, it's, there is insurance for that, the commission can have insurance to cover events and so on and so forth, so that's part of the budget. Yeah, that, the idea though is, is you would, you would cover your own costs for maintaining your, your property, and they would do the same thing. And then, it could go both ways, because conceivably their facility is more heavily used as well.
I mean, and the nice thing about this, which I don't know that anyone's mentioned, is we'll be more, we'll be able to qualify for more grants. You know, for instance, if we want to upgrade March Goodfellow Park, we can go and apply for a grant because we're teamed with another municipality that gives us bonus points on the grant, so we're more likely to receive it. So, I mean, there's a lot of thought that has gone into this, it's not just...
Oh, I realize that, I just, you know, there hasn't been some level of sharing, it's kind of like, hey, by the way, here you go, you guys know what's going on, we as a community don't necessarily have all of the details of that, and we have questions.
Yeah, sure, well, that's why I was trying to answer.
But it's really no different than if you guys damage a facility.
Right.
Who pays for that?
We do.
In New Freedom.
Exactly.
Yeah, so I, I guess that's the, that is...
I guess just anticipating much heavier use is what the hope is.
On both sides, that's, that's the concept, that's the theory.
So, Davey, should you maybe have referred her to in-kind contributions, it talks about on five A, the in-kind contributions shall include the costs and expenses related to and associated with the use of row property of any participant, which would have been incurred by the participant, including but not limited to maintenance, repair, insurance, heat.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, I did my homework, thank you for noticing that. Back to four C, um, it says participants agree that there may be a surcharge, that means that they can choose to do it or not, why isn't may changed to shall so that we can make sure that non-residents...
Because it's up to the commission.
But this is...
This is only forms the commission, the commission forms the bylaws, it makes the rules, so they get to set whether or not there's a surcharge or not, as a part of their budget process, which you ultimately approve.
But you have made it sound like, yeah, we have something in place, then people are gonna be charged, but then it says may, so really, we don't know if they're gonna be charged.
If you want to roll back, if you want to read back the transcript, you actually said, can non-residents participate?
Yes.
And I said, yes, and there's in fact, there's provision for a non-resident surcharge.
But it made it sound like, yeah, we already have that baked in here, and it's gonna happen.
That's up to the commission, that's why we're trusting them with making the rules of how they want to program us.
So then this all gets approved or whatever, and then we sit down collectively and create the bylaws?
Yeah, you guys, you guys create what you want it to look like at that point.
Okay.
This is just the overall authorization document that says Shrewsbury and New Freedom will work together, and these are the, kind of the big picture rules.
Like a framework.
Okay.
On two B, who appoints the representation?
The participants.
Yeah. Says each participant.
Yep.
Yeah, but doesn't each participant, why doesn't it say each counselor, supervisor?
Because it defines New Freedom Borough and Shrewsbury Township as a participant in the very first paragraph at the top.
And then is, I asked it earlier, if there's a shortfall, and you said it would come out of the per capita, you know, so forth, does it say in this document here, um, how it will be funded beyond, if there is a shortfall, I mean, you tell me that, but is it actually, is it legally, is that how it's worded in here?
What it says is, you as a participant, you as a borough council, and Shrewsbury Township have the right to appoint the budget, if they don't show you a balanced budget, then you could say either we'll prove the extra money and we'll figure out how to pay it then, or you don't approve the budget, and they have to come back with a revised budget to choose a balanced budget.
And if we're like mid-year and they've got a deficit, a serious deficit, how is that, you know, it's, it's out of budget deciding time?
Then they have to come back and ask you to pay the paper, that's what happened in Spring Grove for many years.
There's supposed to be a liaison from the rec, the borough council, so they should be here every month, and if there's a shortfall coming, we should know about it before bill comes due.
What is this, what is the standard to be able to come in? Like, we talked about you'd have to have at least three, kind of, what is the standard? I mean, can you come in and, you don't have any parks? Maybe you don't have any rec places, or they're very run down? What, what is the standard? Does this address the standard to come in?
Municipalities have a fundamental duty under the law to provide for recreation, so I don't know, I mean, if you're gonna rate facilities before they come in, I guess that's up to borough council, because borough council's gonna have to under approve an amendment to the intergovernmental cooperation agreement to bring someone in.
I mean, the people that...
So there's no standard?
Why does it matter? Because that municipality is still responsible for the upkeep of their facilities.
Right.
But then it's all our things that are being taxed, and used, and maintenance, and just...
You're talking about, you're talking about our facilities compared to their facilities?
Yeah, they're, they're getting the enjoyment and so forth, they're coming over and using all of our things, and we've got the long-term legacy and the upkeep and everything else.
You do realize that by law, people from other municipalities can come to New Freedom and use our stuff.
Sure.
I mean, it's not, you know, we don't go down and say, excuse me, but are you from Shrewsbury Township, get off the swing.
And, and really, can I just say this about intergovernmental cooperation agreements? They're, they're intended to have someone giving up something and someone getting something in back, and there are benefits that will come from Shrewsbury Township that New Freedom Borough might not have, and vice versa. The idea is that you have a broader area with a broader base of people to pay for additional fees, and you get a grant for an executive director for four years to some percentage.
That's how I see it, I think it's gonna be wonderful, and I'll have all these kids coming to our fire-run tennis here, and I'll, which I already do, I have Stewartstown over here for mine.
You may think we have the best facilities, but we know that the community center kind of has some issues, right? So maybe people in Shrewsbury Township say, that community center really sucks, and we don't really want it so that people...
Good Shrewsbury.
You know, but I'm just, you have to accept the concept that there will be some given, some taken in this agreement, and the concept is, is you try to broaden that base so that everybody gets a little bit, can get a little bit more opportunity than they did in the past, by just going out of the way.
May I, Mr. President? Of course.
What if we go back, what are, what are you willing to nego, do you have a negotiation point? Because my fear is...
Hold on, hold on, we, we've gotten the spring work, and I feel like you're trying to change it.
No, 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 well, let me finish, let me finish. Where, where would you be if we take this back to Shrewsbury Township and they say, absolutely not, we're not going for this? Where would you be willing to negotiate that point? If they say, no, we're only gonna do it for three.
They have no recreation commission, they have nothing, never have had anything, could have put one together, could have done everything we've done to have a rec commission, a successful, you know, rec commission, they didn't, so...
I, I guess what I'm getting at is, this could all, this could all just connect to square one, if Shrewsbury Township says, absolutely not, we're not gonna do this.
Do, do you get the sense that Todd's not going to want to go from three to four?
Is that not clear in the email?
That's, that's pretty clear.
I thought the email made it very clear.
They've already advertised it.
I...
That, that's...
I think they had valid concerns, and I think there are valid concerns here, but I, I guess I also have concerns that it gets to the point of the draft.
Well, one, they should not have posted anything in the paper before any of this was decided. Two, once again, they don't have a rec commission, he hasn't asked one person, in my opinion, to be on rec for them, so he's just saying...
Is it, doesn't that make the point, though? They've had trouble putting this together in the past.
You don't know they've even tried, that's what I'm saying, you don't know if they You don't know if they've ever, and I have to say it for all these years, that they haven't tried.
You don't know that they haven't, right?
No, I mean, I would, I don't think it's that hard for the rec commission. Again, so I understand that.
I understand, but you don't know that they haven't tried and had difficulty with...
No, I don't know what they've done.
Again, having done this before, it is not as easy as, you guys are lucky. You have some very committed members of the rec commission. Not every community is that lucky. That's what I'm trying to tell you, is that's why this can become difficult, because you have some really great members of the recreation commission where other communities don't have that.
Okay, well...
And it took a long time for us to get to that point, because I had to come back to this council and say, "Can we please have our rec commission go from seven members to five members, because we didn't even have enough for a quorum."
Okay. Like Andy said, Andy had a great point. He said, Jenna Allen, she lives in Shrewsbury Township. All right, I know a lot of people. I can go out and try to solicit by people, but we don't know, and I don't want to make a decision based on the fact that they don't think they can do it.
Let's use this as a starting point. She's got some names. She's got some contacts. Pass them along to Shrewsbury Township and go from there.
So, four, four, one liaison, non-voting member from each body.
Right, right.
I think if rec would have been counseled and had regular, maybe monthly, meetings along the way, I don't think it would be this difficult as it is tonight.
Well, I mean, you could flip that around, Erica, and say if rec would have come to all the meetings like I asked them to.
You have a liaison that comes back and forth here.
The liaison that's been...
We apparently have three liaisons that come back.
I was going to say a liaison that's been bypassed.
Well, yeah, I do. I do put a lot of work in and a time and effort to be educated on everything that goes on around here. I really do, and I thank you for noticing that. And I think this doesn't have to be as difficult as it is right now, but it seems to be a running theme on some things, and...
And the common denominator.
Oh, really? Oh.
Yes.
Are we ready to vote?
Wow.
I'm ready with that.
That's, it's now the four...
Well, I've got a lot more questions, but you guys can press down if you want.
Is there, is there any other issues outside of the, outside of the bylaws?
That was the only one we had, right? I thought it was just the, yeah.
Yeah, because I went back, and I only saw the two from the rec meeting two months ago.
Yeah, I think it was just the date being the first Thursday of the month, and then the number.
Dave, I, you can answer this question with regard to the treasurer, whether it's in the bylaws or if it was disagreement. I would, I would say it'd be a value if the treasurer would be bonded. Now, is it a bylaw requirement, or is it should be a part of this agreement? Because I know you've got experience, and you've seen it happen too, with the treasurer and...
Yeah, I will be honest, there in the insurance section, they're talking about, you know, insurance. If we're going to put it anywhere, that's where I would put it. You could probably put it in the bylaws too, but if the municipalities want that, they should put it in here.
Yeah, I agree.
Because this is the governing document that creates and authorizes the commission to exist in the first place. The bylaws will just say how they want to govern themselves. If you want them to have bonding for however much cash is going to flow through them, because quite honestly, that's not a bad idea either, because I've been involved with somewhere, there was cash payments being made, no receipts being done, and at the end of the year, you had no idea where that money was.
Yeah.
I would agree with that. Where would that go?
I would put it in five somewhere, because it says in-kind, it says in-kind contributions. I don't know why insurance is in there, but it kind of goes along with insurance. But you're going to pay for that. I mean, that's going to be a cost that takes away from programming. If it's only going to be the three fifty...
You have to admit, something happens, you're going to pay for it.
Well, that's absolutely right.
I think we elect the citizens to do that.
And since you mentioned insurance now, if I understood this correctly, the commission is going to provide the insurance for the facilities, liability, and I guess injury.
Property damage.
Property damage.
Well, it's liability coverage. It's not property coverage. We'll have our own property coverage as owner.
Right, that's what I was getting at. You know, and we should maintain our own because...
Yeah, absolutely.
What about legacy costs?
Legacy costs.
Legacy costs. Why don't you start hiring these people? Because you got the director, and then you can start hiring employees and so forth. So, what about the legacy costs of these employees? How is that addressed in here?
It's not, because it doesn't need to be. You don't know that you're hiring anybody other than perhaps a director.
It has it here.
But it's a part, it's a part of the approval of the budget, so they have to figure out as a commission how we're going to fund. If they want to hire someone else, they got to figure out how they're going to pay those costs out of the three fifty.
Yeah, because they're supposed to end up paying for themselves after the four years. I mean, they should...
And what happens if they...
You hire people to help with tennis. I mean, it's not any different than that.
What happens if they disband in five years? How's it all figured out then? Is that in here?
No, it's not.
No, it's not.
And we, we expect, since Shrewsbury Township doesn't have a rec commission or whatever, but we expect they will make available all of their facilities, you know, tennis courts, et cetera, as part of this, so they can't say, "Well, you know, we can include everything, but we're not going to include the tennis court by the new township building." The expectation is they're going to include all their stuff.
Right.
And they're building an amphitheater too, which would be great for community on service. I mean, that would be another...
Yeah, and that's something we don't have, and it ought to be included.
And if you want to look, three C talks about personal property, about what you do to give stuff.
I was just looking at that, and it says the community recreation facilities. Where is that? Where is this, where, like, where's the rec director going to be housed?
Well, I think it says New Freedom Borough.
Here.
That's what I, yep, correct. And what about, they're going to be meeting here in New Freedom? The board's...
I guess that depends on the board.
That's what they asked, they asked for that.
Director going to get a vehicle, personal vehicle?
I guess that's up to the board.
It's up to the board. And it talks not here about the entire region. What is the region? Services, the entire region?
I think it's, like Andy said, anyone who lives in Shrewsbury Borough could come and use our facilities or whatever the case may be. We can't keep anyone out.
I'm not asking you to keep it out, but I mean, it's just trying to open the entire region.
If you want to suggest a definition of region, we could already put that in.
I would suggest, you're the one with all the legal advice.
I don't have any concern, you're the one that has the concern with that term. I don't have a legal concern with that term, because it doesn't have any legal impact on this agreement of the municipality.
It just says entire region. It was purely a question. I have to put that into...
The only people this governs, New Freedom Borough, Shrewsbury Township.
Is there no buy-in?
I have a question. Does Shrewsbury Township only come to New Freedom and present this deal, or did they ask Glenrock and Shrewsbury, and they said, "No, thank you"?
We presented it to them.
Why the township and not a neighboring borough that has established records?
Has established records?
Yeah, like Glenrock, yeah, Shrewsbury. Why Shrewsbury Township?
They expressed the desire to join and go intermunicipal and join forces, so... And the goal at the start is to start small and grow.
I would say the boroughs are smaller than the township.
That means we get more money from them.
I was on Borough Council in Glenrock when we had to redo the sewage treatment center, and we had to pay for the entire sewage treatment. So, we had twenty years of capacity for Shrewsbury Township residents.
Glenrock Borough right now is backing out of the police department, so...
It's also on Borough Council. We put "southern" on, so...
Glenrock is?
Cutting back on hours. They're...
Off topic. Seven D talks, I asked about is their buy-ins. So, the first two that come in, they're the ones that do all the heavy lifting. They got all the skin in the game. And then here comes along three or four, whoever, and they just reap the benefits of everything. Got the first two, all the heavy lifting. Is there like no buy-in or anything?
This is not proposed to have one, no.
It doesn't propose to have one, but you can, that can be done if someone wants to come in four years from now.
Aren't these all things that should be decided ahead of time?
Well, would they?
The commission takes care of that themselves. Commission's a self-governing body. They take care of the law and that kind of thing themselves.
Well, they would come to us and ask if we can change the agreement to require a buy-in.
But they, they would, they would ask us.
Yes, they would ask us. But I'm not, you're getting a grant there to hire the executive director to do all the heavy lifting of the project.
But that's going away.
I don't see what a buy-in would get you. Everybody has the facilities. Another group comes, they're going to have their facilities. There's no vehicles like a police commission. There's, there's no...
Not yet.
They don't have one, so...
But if they buy a pickleball, pickleball equipment for New Freedom Borough, it's New Freedom Borough's. It's not like you lose anything. It's yours.
It's on a ton.
But then they have to replace it when it gets all used up.
No, the commission does. But at the end, it becomes yours. That's the idea. You don't, you're not really buying anything when you join this. You're funding your portion of the process and offering up your...
But the cost we bring in is going to cover the pickleball.
Again, there's a give and take. It's not a straight, if it were a straight dollar for dollar, you're not going to do an intergovernmental agreement, because there's always going to be a municipality that has more people and always going to be a municipality that has less people.
Aren't we losing sight of what this is really about?
Sorry?
Aren't we losing sight of what this is really about?
Yeah, pretty much.
It's supposed to be for the children, the young teens, the people of these two boroughs and townships.
Yeah.
To bring good things to them.
I mean, you know, one of the things you're going to be faced with on the commission right away is S Y C, Mason, Nixon Soccer. They all have participants from other areas. We have never, and I would never recommend that we charge people who are not residents on teams to use a field. I mean, you know, you're not, you know, that would just be, first of all, just, it would be cumbersome just to try to track it all down. But, you know, we provide the fields because we get grant money for the fields, and I think by law, we really can't charge people to use a baseball field. Lights we can do, you know.
Who fires the rec director?
Hires or fires?
Fires.
I think the borough does.
The employment of personnel.
The way they do that.
Who does?
The employment of personnel section in three C, three E.
So, it's the commission made for the purpose of carrying out its purposes, employ and terminate such personnel. So, the board that's made up, they're the one that fires.
Correct.
With the exception of the director. So, they're not the one that fires.
It has to be ratified by the...
There are employee heading, in which reading.
So, who fires the rec director?
Recommendation of the commission.
All employees.
So then you would be the final swer. Yeah, okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, because they're here.
New Freedom doesn't want to, but the township does. What happens?
Well, it depends on how many votes they have on the commission.
Would it be two each?
Well, no.
Or, I'm sorry, three each.
So, again, there's no, there's no provision for tie.
Well, hopefully, we'll have four each, because each of us will have four members.
But only three can vote, right?
No, only if there's, only if there's three from Shrewsbury.
About half an hour to get herself.
Yeah, so we have four plus one, but if we're, we have more members than they do, then we have to...
No, no, we're doing away with it.
We did away with it.
We're doing away with the vote. You get four members.
Four voting members.
You have four voters.
Each municipality gets four voting.
Yeah, so, okay, that's what I thought I said.
There is no provision for tie, which I raised. I didn't raise that issue. But it's a recommendation, so you could come back and say, "Four of us want to fire the executive director, and four of us don't want to fire the director."
What if you, the liaison person, be a...
Yeah, that's what I would say. The mayor or something.
You both have a liaison.
No, I mean, but like just...
So, still, we don't know who fires the rec director?
Yeah, the borough council.
Well, the mayor comes to our meetings.
Borough council, they have five. We have seven, and we don't agree.
What are you talking about?
You said borough council, right here?
Borough council would make, because, right, it says, "They would give us a recommendation." And borough council, there are employees. The way this reads is we, there are employees.
So, they're not the township's employees?
They're not.
No. Under three E, "All employees of the commission shall be employees of New Freedom Borough."
So, we're assuming everything.
And then the commission shall reimburse New Freedom Borough for all expenses where they employ new personal employees.
Unbelievable.
And that's not uncommon either, because there is always a lead municipality with an intergovernmental agreement to hire, because you can't have any joint employees. This doesn't work that way.
Any other questions, comments?
We're not approving anything. I mean, we have to go back to Shrewsbury Borough or Township with these proposed changes.
Right.
There's nothing to do on other than to go back with... Because you don't have anyone to go back with. You say, "These are the, what we'd like to change." There's nothing to do on. It's not an approval item, other than send it back.
And Davis, is this a bylaw question or an agreement question? The borough, this council will require at least the liaison, somebody fund the regional rec to be at every borough meeting. If we have a question, we have a recommendation or an idea for a new rec program or something like that, that we need somebody from their organization...
But if your liaison is one of your borough council members, aren't they going to be here? I mean, you can require that unless you want someone else here. But I would say as a part of the appointment, I don't know if the commission's going to require that, because the commission's just serving...
Someone should be here. You know, we've had borough council members be absent, obviously. So, if it happens to be that member, they'll have to send somebody else.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what I'm getting at. There could be somebody here.
Didn't the bylaws say that you can't miss more than three meetings?
There was...
If they adopt the...
But I think Dennis's question is different. Dennis's question is, can we require someone from the commission to be here? I think you say to your appointees, "Someone from the rec commission needs to be at the borough council meeting to give a report." And if that's a liaison, great. If it's not a liaison, so be it.
It's just like when I've been able to make a rec meeting. I'll call or text him, "Are you going to be there?" "Yes, all right, good."
It says that I give a report, whatever it is on.
I don't think it's an agreement issue. That's a pointy.
Okay, whatever.
All right, I make a motion that we send the changes to Shrewsbury Township for their approval. Second. Another discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed?
No.
My vote is aye.
Are we going to request the same things? Let's say they've got changes. I assume we're going to get...
Well, they don't have changes.
We've got their votes.
Assuming that they're, you know, I really...
I'm curious.
If I could get to Todd with your recommendations for Shrewsbury Township residents, that would be really good.
Yeah.
Maybe to, maybe just drop him an email even tonight and say, "I have a list of people that..."
Possibly, though.
Yeah.
Okay.
Soon as it's better.
And this is really, you know, this, this, I think this is a good thing.
The one concern I do have, and I'm just going to throw this out here again, is that from everything I've seen or heard, whatever, they don't have a rec commission, and I don't want them dictating, you know, numbers based on that. Like, I don't want him to come saying, "Oh, no, we can't do that," and that be accepted. And, you know, it has to be two and one or whatever. He comes up with one and one, or I don't know what he'll come up back with.
But that's one thing. Put the names on, on his email, so that he can't say that he doesn't have other names.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Mary.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is that it? Is there anything else for live that I need to stick around with, register minutes?
I'll just cover the other stuff from the minutes later.
All right, thank you.
Make a couple of general announcements.
Thank you for your time.
Nothing, seriously, Chris.
Yeah, no, yeah.
All right, quality of life coordinates. Anyone have any feelings? Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
My quality of life is going to be... Yeah, sure. Five-minute recess. Thank you.
Well, interesting thing is, though, I mean, now people are going to have to start working. So, it wasn't, nothing gets done at all.
Yeah.
That's the problem with that. And you got, and you got some real, in each part, you got some real polar opposites.
Yeah, we're, it just worked to be hurting you months old, just, it just, difficult to work, because they don't have much of a march. How well was the march of, uh, over the Democrats if they beat six, it's a lot.
One of the guys that, 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 that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, that cleared out the P H gallery.
She wants to raise legal questions?
Yeah.
Lung out. And, and they're, and they're, they're giving them, they're all giving them.
Well, I mean, if it does, it does. I mean, you know, if it's really.
That's why I ask.
But, you know, I think.
Okay. I will say, I mean, they do not want to.
If we can get a chance within the township, I think this is, you know, she wouldn't have become, I don't think she'd still be. Oh, God.
I, I know, I know.
I'm very, very disappointed.
Let me leave it at that.
Is it cold in here, or is it just me?
It's getting chilly now. I lost more.
Just a little, just a tiny bit. Next time I bring gloves.
I am gloves. You know what? We did, we did get a document that said he was.
Well, the sign, but this, but this guy back.
Yeah, we, how many, how many of them are you going to? And if we go with the smaller ones, plus allow them the brand bid in addition.
I honestly think that the biggest problem, one, the right board, but number two, the biggest problem with everybody in here was they don't want to be front of their house.
Oh, they should look like Kenya. There is no space to be.
Well, then, then we need it for our.
Unless it's on their sidewalk, the only place there is.
And obviously, we can charge them to have it. Oh, I didn't say that, but you could ask if they're. Because that's essentially what you're saying. I mean, they're, and it's not fair to say it looks like section eight.
That's, uh, I guess.
There are sections. And section, section eight requirements are that there's certain. I love.
What, what's your honest opinion of the quality of life ordinance?
I feel like, I think it works in certain circumstances if you stay on it. I think that it can be, it can become a building. It's kind of nature. What gives you that interim step to like, think of people?
No, that's what you're.
You said, you told me it worked great.
Each prospect, we do it for primarily go Nebraska, age, and like snow, struggling side. Because in Jackson Township, there was a, there was a snow bag, and no one shot it in like two different, two different neighborhoods. So Ray cited every single one coming toward it. You know what DJ, what the MDJ did? He threw out every single case, every single one. But if you sent him that ticket.
They'll probably pay.
You're all back then.
Go ahead, hit you. Oh, I'm sorry. All right, we're done.
Turn the camera back on, or is it on?
I never turned it on. Okay, um, we can strip that out. Quality, quality of life ordinance. Do you entertain a motion to discuss?
I'll make the motion. Let's do it.
Sorry.
Okay, I'd like to second to consider equality of life ordinance. Or, under B, where are we? Um, yeah, under B, is there anything, you did this over, we're on an A B, second page, under B, um, following chapters, is there, I mean, we would make this go along with our.
Right, right.
But is there anything else that you used, Andrew, over in Spring Grove, that you wish you would have added in here? And how hard is it for us to add?
I think that would be covered in the amendment section, um, if there are any future amendments. And I think it does discuss that in here, that that could be done by resolution.
Yeah, under above it, that's a.
Oh, yeah.
Time by resolution.
Okay. Now, property maintenance, is that basically the IPMC?
That's correct.
Okay. So, but as an example, at a property we recently discussed, there was all that garbage out back. Under this, you would go and write a ticket. That would be the first step.
If we could see it from the.
Well, I mean, or if someone.
Well, no, we went through this. We went through that, though zoning does not always require permission to go on property. We read that.
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to get, I don't want to get that specific. I, I just wanted to know, so we would write a ticket for that, and then we could write a repeat ticket if they didn't clean it up within so many days.
Ten days.
That would give us at least a little bit of a hand. Of course, they probably wouldn't. What happens when they don't pay the ticket?
Figures.
Then it goes down.
Uh, it goes to the.
That's right, yep, yep.
Okay. Who are officers of the borough?
Well, you can determine who they are.
The officer of the borough would be borough council.
I thought it talked about coming when they.
Zoning.
When they dispute it, didn't it come before council?
Yes, yeah.
So my recommendation was going to be that if they dispute it, that it go in to the property maintenance appeal board.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, but it's not all property maintenance.
Well.
The most.
What, what ordinances does this apply to?
Whatever ones you want.
Everyone?
Whatever ones you say here.
Whatever ones you put under B.
Yep.
So we can say this applies to all ordinances?
Except for Z.
Well, you could, you could, but I'm not sure why you would do that. You want, something that's made about. It would apply to store water management. There's a lot that would apply to. These are really quality of life nuisance issues.
Okay, so is the fine the same for all things?
The original one is yes.
Yeah, this, this one is yes. The first ticket is twenty-five dollars.
And that's how it's going to go for, also again, if you don't do whatever.
Twenty-five, second is fifty.
It's just across the board. First, second, third, up to a hundred.
Up to.
Five, or five, five hundred, I mean. Okay, so that, that is the B schedule. That would be the B schedule, fines and penalties, right?
Yep.
Across the board for everything. So on, you get ten days. On day eleven, it is a, is it a violation on day eleven? Like.
Yes.
You can move forward on day eleven. Well, diet, okay, violation day one, but on day eleven, what happens?
You give a second tick.
Such failure to pay shall result in issuance of a non-traffics citation for the offenses enumerated. So.
They didn't pay it.
So we'll go to the MDJ.
It doesn't come to an appeals board? Like, if you don't.
If they don't appeal, no.
If they don't appeal it.
If they don't appeal.
And if they don't pay it, it goes directly to the judge?
Yeah. I thought, I thought we were upset about having to spend so many days giving notice and then going to the MDJ. This is the interim step, where you can get someone's attention without going to the MDJ.
Sure.
Right.
All right, I'm just seeing what the process is here. So, and we have the option to give a warning first. Doesn't have to be out the gate, twenty-five buck fine. We can say.
Correct.
Look, this infraction is wrong, fix it.
Yes.
Good?
We always, we always had that on.
This should be looked at education wise.
Correct.
Citizens, that is what I think.
So if you, what, so then if the warning is number one, is, is that count? We gave you a free pass, so the next time we do it, the second time, it's at twenty-five.
Twenty-five dollars.
That needs to be defined.
I don't think you want to wait ten days to give the second one and then give another ten days.
Well, it also depends, it depends though on what the ordinance is.
If it's grass by the end of twenty days, it's going to be another.
You only have to give them, you only have to give them ten days, and after the tenth day, it becomes a violation.
What if they, what if they want to go to, to a hearing to the borough council or something on day eight, if the council's not going to meet for a couple more days?
Well, they have to fi- I mean, we can't go to the, because it talks about going to the next regularly scheduled meeting. There, arguably, that's an advance until they have their appeal. Yeah, I mean, that's.
Okay, so.
You, you can't, I mean, if they're going to appeal it.
Yeah, that could be a way, that could be a way to game the system, too. I mean, if you don't, the borough council's not going to need for another two weeks.
Give it a couple more days.
Gives you, gives you more time.
Let's play it this way. The ordinance is, you have twenty days for the trash issue. This is ten days. So does ten days trump the twenty? Like, this would replace it.
It would give you an interim step, yes.
Okay, so on section D, I'm a little concerned with one and three.
What's nine?
Because I don't know that I want borough staff going and personally serving people, handling violations. I think that could, um, turn into a not good situation with irate people. I don't think that's for safety for borough personnel, one. And then number three, like, if I get something, I got certified mail, I don't go pick it up. That could sit there for, what, twenty days, thirty days? And how long's that going to sit there?
I think it's normally fifteen, twenty days.
Yeah, so if you strike those and handle this, just like we do the water bill, tack it on the subject property, um.
Well, I think you can leave, you can leave all three things in there, but how you implement it could be, we just tack it to the door.
I, I think the issue with your, I think we're tacking it to the door is proving that they got it.
Right.
How do you prove they got their water bill? Is that how you, they, how do you, a pink paper or something, I hear, or no?
Yeah.
Well, proof of, I'm sorry, proof of posting or proof of what, like, water bill?
Well, yeah, like, so.
You tell them to shut off?
Yeah, like, like we do the water bill. We notify that, you know, they haven't paid their bill. Don't you go out, what, what do you do?
We have a constable serve the property, yeah.
A constable.
And he provides documentation that, yes, it was posted at this time.
What's, so why couldn't Wade say, yes, it was posted at this time?
He could, I guess, yeah, I guess he could. I mean, what we've done also is take a picture.
I was going to say, and take a photo.
Yeah.
The issue's going to be how the, the MDJ.
I think.
How much is a constable?
Uh, well, for sewer, I believe he charges twenty dollars a post, and we tack that to the property, so there's no cost.
There we go. Why don't we use a constable?
Because you can't just tack these to the property, because it's not a leachable item on the borough code, you know.
And it has to be a leachable item in order to tack that to their fee?
You could charge it, but, I mean, it gets around the whole idea of having a small fee, because now it's, now not twenty-five, it's forty-five. And then it's not ninety, it's, or it's not fifty, it's seventy. So it depends what you're trying to get to. And the reason you do personal services, there are things you may not know where someone might not live here. Because Spring Grove, you guys actually have parking tickets, but that's written right into your parking ordinance, so you don't have to worry with the quality of life. Some municipalities use a, a quality of life ticket for, for that, where you have someone, we can't run tags. Boroughs can't run tags, only the police department can. So you have to almost hand it to them or put it on their car.
Does, you have a parking, parking in the wrong direction or something on your ticket from Spring Grove?
That was on the parking ticket.
Yeah, but they have, they have a separate park, they have a separate parking enforcement ordinance that isn't in here, right?
That's correct.
Because they have their own parking enforcement officer out there.
If.
They have a whole separate.
If you want to leave one, that's fine, but three, I'm not, I think three should be struck, because then you're going into, well, they don't go pick up their certified mail, you know?
That's the one that's most recognized by law.
Really?
Yeah, I think we leave all three.
You're all three? Okay.
Let the implementation take, take, let the, you know, the code enforcement officer decide how they implement it. And if he knows a person, or they know, you know, like, they, they could just, they can walk up and hand it to them.
Okay, so I think it would be a situation dependent. Okay, then, we'll go back to them. So back to, if an ordinance has a sixty day compliance, this ten days takes over. Is that right? Whatever, whatever is this.
For the ticket, yeah.
Yeah, for the ticket, okay. Um, yeah, I have all appeals come into council to remove that, um, and that would go to the, why can't it go to the property maintenance appeal, that appeal board? Why can't it go there?
Because it's not, they're not all property maintenance.
I think you need to leave it council, because I, I, you're going to, you're going to blow your property maintenance people out of the water. They're not going to want us, I mean, if you write twenty tickets and fifteen want to appeal it.
If people don't shovel their sidewalks on an entire block, and they want to come all file an appeal for the ma- the property maintenance appeal board, you got three hours of property maintenance appeal.
Yeah.
Or, or appeals under this ordinance. Generally, where I see this is, things that are pretty clear caught your eye. You didn't, when you, when you mowed your lawn, you blew your clippings down on the street. You didn't, you didn't shovel your sidewalk at within twenty-four hours of cessation of the story. You know, you didn't, you parked the wrong place, or you parked in violation of, you know, one of your ordinances. They're fairly straightforward violations.
Yeah.
You know?
I, I think under enforcement, office, office, officers of the borough, I think we should define that to be the codes enforcement officer.
Well, if you're going to have an appeals board, it would be your, your borough council. It shouldn't be any officers of the borough council, because then they could technically say, they filed a violation.
Yeah, so I, I, I think we should change that to codes enforcement officer.
Where are you at? What number?
It's, uh, A, under enforcement, enfor- title enforcement.
Oh, that's what the.
Just on the second page.
Do you want that to be the manager as well, or?
Yeah, manager, manager and codes enforcement, that'd be fine.
And on, on that, it says shall enforce, shall. Is, it's like shall.
Must.
Must, change that to must in that, and.
I'm sorry, where are you at?
At the top of A, it says shall enforce, need to change that to must. And also, at the top of the next page, there's shall two times. That should be changed to must.
Where again?
At the top.
I think shall is just legally is for must. I mean, they shall enforce the provision. Where was the other one?
At the top of the next page.
The council of the next regularly scheduled.
Shall, you know, the council shall, as soon as you're ready, please will approve or deny the person's hill.
Yeah, shall's the right word.
But that leaves. But that leaves subjective of if they do or don't. Shall, you shall, must means they follow through.
Shall and must are the same thing, Dave.
Yeah.
Yeah, shall is just legally is for.
Shall is must?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't really care what you put there, I mean, I would just say shall, I mean.
Shall's shall.
Um, and also in fines and penalties, B and C, it says on the last line of B, within twelve months of the first violation. And it says that again in C in that last line, occurring within twelve months of the first and second violation. Why isn't the first violation turned to the latest, like their latest violation?
Not the first, because it resets after twelve months.
Right. You have to be, you have to receive a ticket for your first violation within the previous twelve months. And if that last violation was thirteen months ago, it's a new first violation.
It's a new first one.
Andy, Andy has a question. Andy, can I ask something, Mr. President? This is quality of life. And as we get older and everything, and I'm thinking about the older citizens, I'm one of them, the sidewalk situation. A person, you know, we've had this last year, and people have come to me. So they, they can't clean the sidewalk. They're bedridden, they're sick, they don't have anybody to do the sideways. Do they get a citation? Do they get a fine?
They could, they could, yeah.
Don't you think that we should have something for these people? They've lived here, the elders.
Yeah, I think, well, they would, they would appeal.
They can't get anyone to do their, say, for instance, it happens to me. And I'm bedridden right now, I have a daughter, and I, you know, I have connections, I have a lot of connections that come and do it. But say it happens, so you mean, I would, I paid taxes, I lived here fifty-some years, and I would get a citation, I would get a fine? Because I'm, you know, I'm disabled for a week or so.
I would tell you.
I'm sure if you called the borough office, they'd strike.
That's what I'm saying, there should be something that we can tell the elders, that they can come to this borough office, and that they can get help. When needed, they're not just going to get a ticket.
Well, I can tell you this, if someone were walking across your property and you hadn't cleaned the walk, and you're an elderly person, you're going to get sued. And you're not going to get any break, because you didn't clean your walk, your walk, because you're ninety.
I understand that.
And if the borough doesn't, Glenruff went through this last year, if the borough doesn't enforce their own ordinances, that person can come back, not only and sue.
Okay.
The homeowner, but sue the borough.
My next thing is, if we have a case like that, I want to, because I have the funds to take care of it, and I can find somebody. But wouldn't it be nice if somebody from the borough would clean that portion of the sidewalk?
Oh, no.
Uh, we start down that road.
That would not be.
How about we mow your lawn, too?
And take out your garden.
I, I just, I just have this vision of, you know, we, we are the borough that cares. And I guess I'm very wrong, times have changed. But I'm, you know, I was.
I think, I think we could honestly tell people that if they have a problem, they call the borough.
I want to be able to tell, because I'm saying how great this borough is, and I chose to live here over fifty years. Because it was such, it was a village, it was a borough, and we cared about each other. And I want to be able to say that, you know, some of these people are living on very minimal incomes. That they can call the borough and they can get some help. I just, I just want to be able to do that as a councilwoman.
Maybe we could contact the, the, the Boy Scouts. And say, hey, do you have some, some of your Boy Scouts that would be willing to help out our elderly if they needed during a snowstorm?
That would make me very, very happy to be able to hold my head up and say that we are a borough that cares for these people. Anyway, it was probably, it was just a try.
We could put you on a committee, a committee of one to talk to O'Brien about getting the Boy Scouts to help out with that.
Under fines and penalties, D, the second line there, within a twelve-month period, whether or not, I think that should be in bold, so that they understand whether or not such violation is the same violation as the first. I mean, I think that should just be bold in the words whether or not, so that it's just understood.
I think it ought to be the same violation, I mean, you know, if you go, you whack somebody for twenty-five bucks for one violation, then you, you know, the next month, somebody sees a different violation, the neighbor's got a, a problem with the neighbor. And then the third month, they come in, hey, I'm going to, I want to tag the guy from the third violation, now he's up to seventy-five bucks, and then the big winner is I get him for number four, maybe five hundred bucks, and it's different stuff.
How, how long do they have to fix the violation?
Ten days.
And then they get another one, yeah, I, I don't, I don't think.
But it could be a different, what he's saying is it could be a different violation, so you mow your lawn, but you have something else going on.
Well, yeah, I can, I can, I'm not going to mention any names, but I could, I could see a couple people here just wait and say, yep, I'm going to get him for that one, then I'm going to come in next month for that one, and that, and that. When it go up to five hundred bucks and the guy hasn't gotten the first one fixed yet. Just different stuff, that's all, if you want it.
It can be used as a weapon, it certainly can.
If he's not going to do it, then, you know, he's not going to do it.
Our current ordinances could be used as a weapon. Is anybody in here, I said our current ordinances could be used as a weapon, does anybody in here do that?
I just, I'm just not forgiving some people another opportunity to try to do something like that, that's all. If somebody, if somebody needs a twenty-five dollar fine and they got so long to pay, they don't pay it, okay, same violation, whack them for fifty, they'll get the message. If they want to keep pushing it, okay, so they're running to go for five hundred bucks on a violation. Same violation.
I realize that there's definitely some flaws in this, but is it possible to change the twelve months to a calendar year for tracking, easy track?
Yeah, that's up to you guys.
Well, I, my concern is, yes, then it resets January one, either way, it's one day seven, right?
Yeah, it's easier to keep track of from a municipal standpoint.
I think the borough, Spring Grove wanted that for some reason, I think.
Oh, I mean, if you have a violation in November, and the same violation in February, I mean.
So that leaves them that they know they can goof off the second half of the year.
That's what I said, there are definitely flaws.
I don't think that's good.
It doesn't matter which way you do it, it's going to be a flaw.
So, can we move to vote on this?
So, at this point, I think of the authorization, for Dave and I have kind of put everything together, presented draft back to council for authorization.
I guess the question is, does, does borough council want to give input on which ordinances should be included?
I think absolutely.
Before we draft it, you guys may want to go through the ordinance book and say, hey, we think this should be in, this should be in. The rest of this, anything here that we could add.
Should it be all things that involve residential homes?
Again, I don't think it's that simple, I think it's things that are conclusively proven in one view.
Can't, you could probably pull that easier than.
Well, you know, there was a comment made about parking, and, I mean, snow emergencies could fall into that.
Yeah.
So things, things along those lines, but I think that section might be worried a little differently, so it really would be.
Well, that's seventy-five bucks a pop on the snow emergency parking, I think, that's.
Yeah, so there would be a difference there, this would replace that if you were to include it, but I think those are discussions that council needs to have, if you're wanting to move forward with this, what sections, what ordinances do you want included?
And my point is, is it's, it's things that can't, that can be quickly fixed. I mean, there are property maintenance issues where it might be scraping paint or something outside, you can't do that in ten days.
Right.
Right, it, it, it just, so it depends on the nature of this, that's why I'm saying, it's things like, did you clean your walk or not clean your walk after a storm? Did you, did you grass clippings on the street after you mowed within four hours when you stopped mowing? Or are you parked in, in front of a hydrant, or, you know, wherever? Yeah, I mean, those are the sorts of things that typically quality of life are for, because they're quick things that you can hit them with, people can fix right away. There are others, I mean, there are sections of your ordinances that don't, that while they may seem that they're easy to fix, or they should be easy to fix, they're not necessarily easy to fix. So property maintenance, it might be fair not to, I don't know why you guys put that in the borough, like, I can't remember that one.
I, I.
Or rental property.
That was, that was to address.
We have more rental properties than you think.
They have a rental property ordinance.
We don't have a. No, that was brought up, that we needed to have.
Just like, yeah, exactly. All I'm saying is a barking dog, right, barking dog, you can go out, you can see the dog barking, you give the person a ticket, a warning and a ticket. You don't have to go to the MDJ then, so you really have to decide what things you want to be able to address with this versus what things you want to go through the process of the MDJ. That's, that's really all I'm saying.
And I'm sure if you go to this chapter one sixty-eight animals, it includes a lot more than barking dogs. You know, it's cleaning up after, cleaning up, dog, you know, off a leash.
That's under solid ways.
So, to that point, then, Dave, is you saying that you're getting more specific with your chapters and sections?
Well, these are from Spring Grove, right?
Yeah.
So you guys, see, do what you want, I mean.
Right, but I think you're saying it should apply to certain sections.
Yeah, I think you almost, you have to do that to determine which ones you want to apply to. Because people need to know what they can get a ticket for and not get a ticket for, that's the whole.
Who wants, who wants to do that? I'll go on the committee.
Well, you can all read through it and just.
I mean, if you wanted to do a committee of three people or even four, we can do. We're in a meeting, not a quorum.
You can have four, man.
You know, four, he's one of these brothers.
We can do that, but I encourage you to all look at what you, what section you want.
Okay, okay, yeah, that's, that's.
Do that, bring representations.
Put in a agenda for next, next month, and we'll give you a feedback.
You can, that'll give you a chance to talk to your.
Yeah.
People that.
So we're in a level of ordinances.
I think it simplifies the.
Level of ordinances.
I think, well, yeah, what we can do as office staff is we can put together sections that we think if council would like to review sections of the ordinance that you would like to see included as well, that's. That's obviously acceptable.
It would be wonderful to have them before we draft, in front of borough council, at a borough council meeting, because maybe we can expedite getting this done.
Is there a law that says that we?
Everybody have it in, everybody first?
Yeah.
We just send to Andy, right?
Say that again?
Whatever we come up with, we just send to the office.
Yeah, send to Andy, yeah.
Yeah.
It, it would help sift through things, so if we put something in that you guys just actually don't want, we can just take it out, we don't have to talk about it for five minutes at the borough council.
Is there a way that we can put into that quality of life, less than ten days, say for mowing grass? Because if you've got twelve inches of grass, if you wait ten in, ten.
Ten is kind of comfortable, because someone could go for vacation for seven days, I mean, ten days is fairly quick anyways.
If you go less than that. For ten days, I'm going to have my daughter, my grandkids come down and mow it.
You might, someone, someone who may be elderly may not be able, they may be visiting their child, or what, I mean, you have to balance it a little bit, because if you, if it's too quick a few, the DJ is going to say, you guys are crazy.
No, I'm saying, could you say five days instead of ten? Because ten days with rain, it doubles, you got twenty.
I'm telling you that my gut reaction from a legal standpoint is you probably ten days is about the minimum, unless it's an extremely dangerous situation.
All right, let's, let's leave it at ten for now, and then forty-one.